Okay, so we will. Any board meeting for September 7th, 2021. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner via Zoom and in person pursuant to the general laws. If anybody's recording, that's fine. You just need to let us know. Anyone? Okay, this is being recorded as well and will be posted online. Seven o'clock town planners report.
Thank you very much, Chairman Dillman. Let's see, I should say that this is the first meeting where I'm pleased to attend as town planner. It's normal according to the.
Hey, John!
A pleasure to be here.
It's a pleasure.
Was that the, something about the rose and the blossom, right? Said that much. A part of bit of work with the town for the construction observation services over the Greens East project. And with the select boards move towards formalizing this role right here, that interaction has come to a close, that work, that we're in a understanding. So I submitted to myself and in this well, just some big work to formalize. Bringing that to a close.
Did you prove yourself?
What was that?
Did you prove yourself?
Yes, I proved myself, I even gave myself a little vacation in the process. Having said that much, we don't yet have a replacement, so. And it has been customary since late April or maybe a little bit after that point. There was a little hiatus work out there, an interim position between Mr. Brown, Chief Director. And yours truly, we've been out there kind of on a as can basis. Hopefully we'll have another party identified that can fill that role as they close out for the future phases. Okay, that's that chunk right there. I got an inquiry from Mr. Carter Gilman. He was working with the new owner of the Sodom Mountain Campground. He was inquiring about the construction of year-round hard bum cabins. At that site. I respect the fact that some aspects of that operation likely are pre-existing non-conformant. To be fair, the files are rather bare. I can see that there's been, there was some discussion about what we call an accessory snowmobile sales. Use sometime in the early seventies, so I know that there's winter time activity. Why do I bring this up? In order, I think we need to, my next step is to comb through the town clerk's archives, see what they have on file for any affirmative determinations for that property and try to establish. What's on record, year-round, if it were to be permitted anew today, year-round campsites would not be permissible without that. Winter time, I think ski area is a term used in our, in our pile.
Well, it used to be. There was a, there was a lift there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Some of the history is certainly lost on me. So there's some digging and we should try to clear up what options may be available to that group.
What's the name of the name of the party?
Uh, I don't have the name of the party. That was Carter Gilman who represented the contractor. Was covering the group going to be installing those structures, if that was an option. Spoke with Mr. John Hulahan, inquired about 83 College Highway. We remain residents at the former Waterman Fund. The inquiry was about utilizing that site for farm stand and retail use, look like farm stand and other retail sales items. That's zone currently is on our forty, our forty on that side of the street. Explaining to him that as it sits right now, I didn't have a solution. The parcel that's offered up is only two acres in size, so in our forty, I don't see a way to get around to the details. So I'll be advising them on a prospective zone change if they choose to go to that.
Right, otherwise a farm stand, they've got to produce, I think it's 50% of what they sell. Minimum 50%.
We, they sell. We fished around a little bit for what options, there's a five acre minimum threshold if it were to be accessory to that principal farm use, where I could see that happening, but you're like that.
It's only two acres, you're saying?
That's, that hasn't been recorded, but that's the virtue reported that was available for that site.
Is he the same party as Paul, also from, is it the same party?
I don't believe so. He does another work in town, he said working in some existing older houses and reconditioning them. Let's see, I met with Vlad Gretzka and one of his partners for the former tennis club and just discussing that acreage and the Jason Lombella parcels off Tannery Road. That is zone residential, long tannery. I think the Lombella parcels were a part of his own change, that they all be residential zone. Back portion of the tennis club is industrial restricted, so he was wanting to discuss options for both commercial use as well as customary home occupations and the ceilings associated with that. And that's about it.
Okay. 7:05 public comment. Does anybody, let's start with in person here, have any thing to bring to the board's attention that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, anybody on Zoom have anything? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't here last time. It's been a process, it's just, it's getting to be really irritating just to have to keep dealing with the same thing over and over again. I know there is plans coming in the future of you guys about all that stuff, but I just wanted to be heard and yell, but. Stay home and I'm not trying to be rude or anything, I just want you guys to be considerate of us as residents that we're just kind of dealing with a lot. You know, I work, I don't really have time to come to these meetings and come up there and do all this stuff. Just want to let you guys know that it's going to be a little bit of an eyesore, you know, if you guys just take us into consideration, come back and talk to you guys in the future. This is mine.
What was your name?
Jason.
Thank you. Any other? Yes.
I was still trying to get the right-of-way resolved on between sixteen, on sixteen Sawgrass Lane.
You just need to state your name and address.
Green Garden.
Okay.
I live on sixteen Sawgrass Lane.
Okay.
There's supposed to be a right-of-way between two properties, nobody in the housing authority really. And I was wondering where that stands, what we need to do. In limbo.
What was submitted the other day?
Yes, I'm sorry, to be clear, what was submitted by the developer? It's strictly looking at how identified that word was.
Okay, well, I mean, it's so. Yeah, the issue general, the issue is going to be raised, when is that on for, did we put it on yet?
It'll be on the 21st.
On the 21st of September, there will be discussion about that issue. But I think it is an application to modify the identification of it, it's not so much a modification of there being a right-of-way there. Though, you know, I think I've said before, I'm not, I at least am not that inclined because the right-of-way derived from a back and forth process where, you know, they wanted a waiver or something and this is how, you know, this is why the waiver was granted in part and it was something that was identified and, you know, should have been known for, for the property being purchased, so that was my inclination. We can talk about how it gets identified and what's, what materials go there.
That is, when you buy a piece of land, you don't know where the house is going to be. Someone determines that for you based on what the best placement of the house is. And the way there's right-of-way is right going back by my bedroom window. And nobody wants it, nobody wants to maintain it. All that's behind there is tick infested, the forests or, you know, trees. I mean, and, and there's no parking on the street. I mean, what, what is it, why do we have to have it if nobody wants it?
So, because there are requirements in the bylaws as to what needs to be put in there. And you're going to probably know the text a bit better than I do potentially, or Marcus probably does too. Anybody who's been a planner more than me, but there are requirements for. Is it like a park?
It's a park, yeah. Yeah, the original subdivision plan included a pocket park.
Right.
With a picnic table, some equipment for children to play on. And that, that was part of the original subdivision design, but that was then dropped. As compensation for that getting dropped, we decided that we needed to have access to the open space.
Why can't we do that from sunny side?
There, there is.
Well, again.
If it's safe public access, but the, the developer has to make the proposal to change the subdivision plan because what's approved by the planning board and recorded now is what is there.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've always said, we're more than happy to talk about different substances, even different locations. It, you know, but there has to be some sort of access and it has to be sort of visible access. Because again, that's part of the conditions that was part of the trade-off.
Public?
No, not public, it's for the, for the members of that community. But, you know, the option is, you know, to go back to the original required component of the bylaws, which is a park or other type of area. They asked for a waiver for that requirement, got this, and now, you know, the people come, the homeowners who come in don't want that, so, you know, you can't go, you can't keep going down and, and the town loses its ability to sort of, you know, require some degree of open space and access in these developments. I mean, that's part of the trade-off, so.
If we come up with an alternative, would, would that work?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, I think speak for the board that we're more than happy to listen to whatever alternatives you have and, and, and consider it. I just, I think there has to be some, something there that, that folks are willing to, to, to allow some open space access there. I mean, that's, that's the point of these developments and in part of the consideration that goes into the creation of these.
So if the developer has submitted something, when do we get to see that? We're not aware of any submissions by the developer.
It came in just a short time ago.
Yeah, to be fair, the next meeting's in two weeks' time, so that is advertised and posted and mailed out and everything else frankly today. The second advertisement next Tuesday and the meeting is the Tuesday after that.
So we see that, we see the proposal submitted last night?
On the 21st, I, it, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It's, it's fair to say that if you have a, a solution that you'd like presented, an alternative, then I'm happy to act as a conduit, but we should make sure this dialogue involves the developer.
Well, I think it's just a bit disturbing to find that they, when we're not aware of any proposals by the developer at all.
Because it hasn't officially been.
That they were in favor.
It just came in, I think.
Just came in.
So. So you can come, you can come into the planning, you can come into the planning board office and look at the plans if you want, I don't, or the application as well, I don't know what came with it. You can certainly come in and take a look at what information is here. So, and it's on for what a modification of a.
Modification to the independent subdivision and special.
So I presume that there's notices going out to.
Notices went out today.
So there you go, so you'll, you'll get something in the, you'll get something in the mail presumably at some point this week. Doesn't bother, okay? Yes, ma'am, just state your name and address please first.
Chirling, Chiang, 17. At the last meeting, I submitted a letter from the, that had an alternative option that we proposed for the, the access, which was on the open space behind the burn on Sun.
Okay.
So take that out of the.
All right, and we'll put it all together, to be fair, I haven't sat down and looked at this whole thing yet, just because it's not on until, you know, another two weeks. So we'll put it all together and if anybody, you know, any of the residents want to come in and take a look at it, you can certainly come in and, and take a look through.
John, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, we have a copy of that, so we'll just keep it with that.
And I'll, I'll share that with the developers every week.
I did.
Oh, want to make sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other public comments? Okay, anybody on Zoom have a public comment? Decide to use the hand raise button if you could. Okay. We will go on to 7:06, which is 217 College Highway Site Plan Review Continued. All right. Okay. Is anybody showing up? Or not?
Oh.
Brian, yeah, Brian, there he is, okay. You want to come on up?
Finally, you saved engineering not the half of issues.
How are you?
I have one of these soft chairs.
Sitting down. So at the last meeting, there was a couple of small changes requested of us to modify the location of the fence between the western property boundary and the driveway, to flip the sidewalk on the other side of the driveway, increase the head of our devices on the north boundary, no parking signs at the end of the common drive and provide some format of the alteration to the right-of-way. Revised plans have been submitted with all those comments on them and we're prepared to drive through the alteration to the right-of-way.
Is that it sent to the, the homeowners?
No. I, it really is taking the limits of the existing right-of-way and extending it to the limited, the expanded driveway.
The easement, the new, the new, the revised easement document?
Yeah, I mean. So. You know, I can tell you, as I think you talked to John today, it was brought up to me today as to whether a setup could be done where.
You see the line follows the edge of the driveway here, this is dark line. So in effect, that corrects the issue of the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way being outside the limit of the legal right-of-way currently.
Where this gravel road is.
Correct, right now that's outside of right-of-way, so we're, we're correcting the issue on the whole length.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the existing right-of-way on it. How it sign off on that new document, I mean, I, you know, but, or at least have a ability to look at the document before. I guess. I just got it, I just saw it today, you know, I mean, I, I don't, my inclination is that it's not significantly different. I don't think there's a, if anything, an easement is broader than a right-of-way, I think. But I'm not a land use attorney, so I don't know, so what you're giving them is an easement, what they had is a right-of-way. I don't, you know, I want someone to at least look at that document before it became operative. But, you know, what I was saying was, it got, because that's what's with today, I think John talked to you about it today, is to whether a feasible alternative would be sort of cut off, say 15 feet or so on that left-hand side. And just sort of, that would be for the, or it would be a road that is either separated by a front or an arbor bydy and that's their driveway and then everything on the other side is the daycare and you sort of have two different worlds. And they ma, they maintain and they do whatever they need to do on their side and you do whatever you need to do on yours. And you can get rid of, you know, probably some of that right-of-way or you don't have to do a new document, it could be within that. And they were going to, those trees that sort of look like they're going, they, they come over are sort of old zones that can be, you can create, you can trim them back, you know, and, and branch them and be able to go take the cars underneath that in some underbrush and we could basically use that existing right-of-way.
So I'll be honest, on a straight engineering basis, I can't get behind that solution because it's two driveways directly touching each other. There's 38 feet there at the narrowest point that we have. The driveway alone takes up 24 of it, so that leaves 14 feet for another driveway. Any plantings or screenings, a separation between the driveways because you can't just have pavement, pavement or pavement gravel, it's not going to function properly. So it's a big ask and I, I think it's going to further confusion, it's going to confuse people trying to turn in and out of there. There's not enough room to create a pure separation of uses there. And then there's a whole plethora of other issues, but just on engineering 101, it, it doesn't make sense to me to do it that way. And I think I said to John, if you gave me two plans 100 times, I'm going to pick one of the common driveway if I had no dog in this fight. It's the right way to do it, engineering-wise, traffic management-wise.
I don't disagree from a general concept, right? I mean, that's why we have a common driveway bylaw now is that idea of, of, you know, one end, you know, one per cut, one entry point. And, and doing that so you don't have two things right next to each other and the confusion and issues that that caused. You know, what? I don't, it's not the ideal solution, I'm just wondering whether in this scenario, and I mean, just keep in mind, you know, at least the way I'm approaching this to some degree is you have a piece of property that is not greatly suited for this, this development on it, it is really tight and I think everybody can agree on that. And it has very limited access and you're trying to make it work, I, you know, and you're doing a good job of it, but you're trying to make it work. And so I'm just wondering whether, even if that's not the ideal 101, whether it is something that is, you know, a, a reasonable compromise in this solution rather than have required the homeowners to use, you know, a, a commercial entryway to get to and from their house.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, I mean, but we've been going back and forth on this issue and I've never broached this subject because I generally feel like it's a bad solution. The fact that it doesn't fit is, is another issue. But doing it, it creates two side-by-side driveways for half the property and then there's no need for two driveways anymore, so it goes back to their common driveway. I see a lot of turnarounds in their front yard because people pick the wrong of two driveways until people get the pattern of behavior. And then it has massive implications to the layout of the site that we've vetted through three and a half minutes with this board, through the planning board, through DPW, that would essentially be starting over.
I think police and fire would probably have an issue too, safety-wise. One of our concerns about this site initially was the number of ways in this area.
And this has.
Safety in an engineering standpoint, I would say would be that.
This has been vetted by the, the police department and fire department, all, all the town boards.
Seems to me we could endorse the plan contingent upon this easement being finalized.
Right, and that's something, of course, we'd be happy to work back and forth, but there's no sense in finalizing and recording it without the corresponding plan approval.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you just all subtle?
I'm sorry.
Are the easements all subtle?
No, we have a draft prepared by the, yeah, and it's, it's not going to be recorded until there's approval that would match it. Because there's, there's just, it doesn't make sense to grant an easement to a plan that doesn't.
No, for, for people on both sides agreeable to the easement, talk the language.
So the easement is actually given to the neighbors, so they, they don't have, there's no process for them to accept it. It's not a transfer of land, so to speak, where it's, it's a swap of real estate, it's, they're giving them an easement that references this plan. Say that we don't have an objection to getting their input on it, but it shouldn't have any impact on the, from the end result is they're getting the same type of travel passage they had.
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, whether it's if they want to have an attorney look at it or, you know, we should probably run it by town council just to have, you know, fresh eyes, look at it and make sure that there is no, it's not being reduced in any way. You know, there's any, nothing in the language that is sort of taking away what they have for existing rights, right? So I mean, I think that that's fair.
We don't have that being a condition of this.
It should be if you keep going back in time.
Yeah, with the current.
It's a dotted.
Would be actual.
Dotting line that comes out of that right away.
Outside is the gifted right-of-way as it exists.
For the, for the, about half of the duration, yeah.
Yeah.
Where the tree line comes, kicks out, the driveway goes.
Yeah.
You see this tree line, this is a tree line, so then you put, oh, over there, which puts it out of the right of, so they want to give them the easement, cover the whole thing. All right, it seems to me they, they want to have a, a good entrance like this that's paved until we come to their gravel area, which they have to maintain.
What like the.
That delineation to help keep other people out, I would presume, in addition to whatever signage, that's great to add. There was the sidewalk here, is there supposed to be a connection from the sidewalk, walkway in front of the building?
I understand the sidewalk was brought up as a concern for the butter to the rear. If a connection to the building sidewalk is desired, that's.
Or, or like paint, or painted crosswalk or something so that there is at least.
It terminates at the end of the driveway, so they'd be having with content with the homeowner traffic at that point. You can see the sidewalk stops right here, so it's just been crossing the gravel.
Just want to make sure there's no kids crossing where there might be people pulling into parking spaces.
As, as you guys requested, we flipped it to the other side, so it eliminates that.
Sidewalk was for people, I don't know if there's any children residing here who would come down to a bus stop, that they would have a safe, safe passage down to Lion Hill Road. Because the children here are going to.
Get stuck there all day.
Be here.
Mom and dad are hopefully dropping them off.
Unless they escape and try to go to CDS.
McDonald's across the street. Yeah, they're going, they're going, they're going to McDonald's.
To make a bridge, to make a bridge.
All right, any, any other board questions?
Shouldn't be. Just in homeowner. Remember with this offer that they have made.
I think that's what we're looking to do is to have that easement drafted. By the council to make sure that they're not getting screwed, yeah.
To me, it's in, it appears to be on the surface in in their favor.
Right.
Well, I think it is, are the homeowners here.
Otherwise, they'd have to move their gravel.
Yes. Hey, hi, guys. We're on the Zoom.
Hi, guys. Folks.
Do you want to offer some comments?
Yeah, so I on the first set of plans that that we all saw um, on round one of the meeting, it it actually showed the driveway. Uh, it was uh, more narrow and and um. Then it then it got widened uh, to actually accommodate, I believe. For the land of butters, um, to to make that area a little more accessible for us. And. Coming up with with a a maybe solution, um, with talking with the planning board is. I know that. It was discussed as, you know, engineering one oh one, that it 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 doesn't work in in a perfect scenario. But if we could somehow have that easement right of way, whatever the correct terminology is. On the outside of that property. Uh, we don't need much. It doesn't have to be paved. It doesn't have to be. We're not asking for anything for them to do. For that simple dirt road to be moved to the left, they can have their driveway. They can have everything that they need and actually where, if you look on C two. To the left hand side of the new daycare, you can see where the black top stops and it turns to gravel. So they're going to have this gravel road. Let me see if I can find a dimension on there. A gravel road that goes roughly, uh, I don't know, a hundred and fifty feet across their property. Where they could have grass. That could be more area for the kids to play, but instead we're we're putting that that that. Again, easement right through the middle of it. So if we just pick that up and move that to the left and have an adjacent. Way that we can get in and out and and it and it really allows for the safety. And 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 privacy of both. Ours is separate from theirs. So you have this commercial driveway that allows their traffic to get in daily. Easily with no obstructions from the homeowners trying to get in and out with their busy lives and schedules. And separates the two. Um, they could put a row of arbivites or 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 a fence, whatever, whatever they see fit. And and we'll take one hundred percent responsibility, uh, taking care of that road as we've always done. That road now, that that dirt easement, that's, we always take care of that. We plow it, we maintain it, we bring this uh. The the stone in when when it washes away and we do the same thing on on this one. And and like we said, that at easement is supposed to be to the left anyway. It's supposed to be much more to the left and. Somehow over time, it just kind of worked its way more to the right towards the daycare. And and I think if we do a little bit of research and and again, make these numbers here, yeah, it's going to be tight, but it will work. If you work the math, the numbers don't lie, it will work. Like I said, we don't need much. We don't have. Uh, the commercial regulations of driveways like like um, the daycare have to follow. We just need. Ten feet, eleven feet, just to get a car up and down and and again, kind of have our own separate area. I just don't think ever in this scenario or any, if we can have a commercial driveway separate from a residential. That's always the best answer if we can make it happen. I think we could all agree as that, a- as homeowners and. With having a three year old and a six year old want to walk down the driveway or ride their bike down it. Uh, again, I I I think if it's possible, um, it's not a bad idea to, let's at least try. See if we can make it work. I mean, there's really nothing to lose at this point. I think it's the only option um, that we can look at and um. I I hope we can do it. I hope we can uh, come to terms with it and make it work.
So you're saying move the driveway, the gravel driveway. West.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Almost where where it was originally supposed to be, but again, I I don't know how in time, just if it just kind of migrated with the stone and rock. More to the east, but if we move it more towards that, the west line where that the the straight line of pine trees are now. We can have our own little spot there, again, separated by whatever they would like. It's up to them. And they can still have their driveway, their access, and it also. Helps with, uh, as the engineer had mentioned, as people get used to the flow of traffic, it, we have two separate driveways now. So instead of them going too far down and ending up in our yards or in our driveways and trying to turn around because, you know, people make mistakes with driving. It's it's just life. And we're separating those two and and I think we're also, we're we're minimizing uh, the chance of that happening.
So you're proposing all the way from Vining Hill Road, a separate gravel driveway?
Just like it is now. Same exact thing as it is now, just move to the left.
No way. I I would not be in favor of that to have two driveways. There's got a couple of issues with traffic coming into Vining Hill Road and also snow removal. How how it will be plowed, because there's a sidewalk there now on the west side. Which was put in for safety of uh, people coming down from the two homes.
You wouldn't need the sidewalk there because we'll have our own separate area. The sidewalk won't be necessary now. We'll have our own sidewalk, a private area. We won't need for them that they don't have to put in a sidewalk for us anymore, which saves on the cost for them. You just put a row of arbivites. We'll take care of our own snow removal like we've always done. We've always been responsible for the snow removal and it's never been a problem.
That's what I was trying to say beforehand.
I'm surprised this hasn't been discussed earlier when there was a negotiation on this whole project.
So you take the twenty four feet driveway.
Our understanding was that people were supportive of. Both the homeowners and the uh, daycare folks. And now it sounds like. It's not required.
Well, no, I don't think it's ever been projected that the homeowners were happy with this. I mean, I think it's it's more the legal requirements of what we're allowed to do, but. You know, this is a sec- a secondary choice and I, you know, I think it was appropriate to present to the board as to which one they wanted, but.
What's the legal requirement for the driveway?
Well, the legal, it's, the issue is, is more that it's a site plan review and you only have so much you can do on a site plan review. You can make modifications to the plan now, you know, I mean. You. Well, I think the question is whether you have. Two driveways next to each other and the confusion that that causes, or whether you have. A entrance to a parking lot that keeps going into a gravel road. With hopefully a sign there that or whatever, I forget what's on here, that sort of hopefully prevents people, but. I everywhere, there's going to be some confusion. There's gonna be. I mean, it's, but it's, so there's two areas of confusion and which one do you think is the better one going forward?
Yeah, there's going to be confusion no matter what with with however area it goes, whether they they drive too far in the back or it starts from the beginning, but I I think. I I think the engineer put it well put that as the uh, the 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 clients, the the. Students become, the driving patterns become normal there and there's adequate signs that. That corral the people to the space they need to go and then on the little dirt road to the left of it that says, you know, private way, do not enter. And everybody gets used to it, you know, it 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 becomes very clear that they go to the paved area, you know. This beautiful school, so on and so forth, whatever the name is proposed, and then you have a little dirt road that is exactly like there is now, but just a little smaller. Um, that says do not enter private way.
I think, uh, I'll speak for myself, Steve and Chad. I. I feel for you guys in your position. I think everybody on the board wants to make you as. Comfortable as a homeowner as possible, but I think the reality of the spacing. Um, both. From an engineering standpoint and that we would then be asking. This company to do a full new set of plans, so I take that into consideration as well. But that, even if they were to do that and try to squeeze it to make it as you suggest, I don't think. That board members would feel that that was a safe. Um, design, nor do I think our police and fire would approve of it as well. So. I.
So a safer design then is to have a mixed group driveway for the for for the two separate homes. The safer option is for our children to to play in a parking lot as opposed to the driveway or be able to walk down to the end of the driveway and get the school bus. They have to do it through a parking lot versus a private dirt road.
I think.
Having a hard time with that one.
Up to the point where the driveway ends, you have. Uh, and then you have the sidewalk bringing it down to Vining. To hopefully alleviate that issue for your children or the children of the other butter.
But again, I I I think if if we go back to version one of the plan, which at that point would, they wouldn't need to be a revision. Cause the plan already exists. They don't need to put that dirt road on this plan. That's not part of this plan. If it's if it's left to us to do that on that side on that easement and we're willing to take the responsibility of it. And or even the financial responsibility of it to create that dirt road and and um, um. Do the the arboring work that it would be to cut those trees up and and clean and safely to create that that dirt road. Like I said, it's exactly the same thing. We're just moving it over where it should go. That driveway doesn't have to be the twenty four feet like they proposed on the first plan. It was it was less wide, didn't have the um, uh, sidewalk on it.
What would John, the, what is the recommended spacing for a safe two way vehicle driveway typically?
If you've got parking on either side, which is where uh, I see it defined in our bylaws. So in the, for the parking section, they've got it shown at a twenty four foot uh, dimension for that. Two way traffic.
No, there's no parking. No parking on this.
I'm sorry. So yes, on the access driveway.
Yeah.
It's shown at twenty two. So it goes twenty two for the access drive, twenty four within the.
If I could interrupt, I I would try to respond to the butters' comment about the original plans. Um, we've never modified the 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 width of the driveway. It's ever since got larger or or skinnier. Do what we've done is, uh, the result of one of the earlier meetings is we tried to expand that buffer between the driveway. And the neighboring property line. So we skinny it up the driveway two feet. We compromise some of the parking. Sacrificed some parking spaces, moved the building over to give that fifteen feet of grass and fencing there. So that's what's caused the need for a much larger right of way to be granted now. So if we were to do. Uh, to try to put another driveway in there, for starters, that would all go away and it still doesn't create enough room for. Two safe, separate driveways. You're still coming to the end of the driveway and you you have to pull out with another car directly next to you. There's not enough room to radius the driveways to give proper movement in and out of the driveways. Um, driveway was flare at the end. You wouldn't have the room to do any of that.
There's no way to merge that. There's no way to make that work at the mouth of that driveway. Where they come together. There's no way to um, coordinate those two together where where it can work. It's it's, because I'm looking at the numbers on the plan and and the numbers, I mean, it's tight, but it it would work.
If they were immediately side by side potentially, but then there wouldn't quite be a proper delineation between driveways.
If we could make one though, if we could, again, these are just, again, the for the conversation aspect of it, if we can come up with a game plan for it to work. So for the rest of our lives that we live here and our neighbors, um, again, we don't have to share a commercial driveway. I mean, that that's the whole thing for us is that, again, small children and and and, you know, our lives being affected on the daily, and I get it. I I think they're going to build a beautiful facility. There's no getting around it as far as it it looks gorgeous. Um, but it. The only solution for us that that we can see is if we can make this work. And and I think if we actually put some real genuine effort in, and we're willing to too. We're not asking Sage or Haneesh or anyone to to add any. Uh, uh, extra costs or spend any money on this. We're willing to even put in what it may take to 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 make this happen for this part. We're not. Trying to push costs off. We're not trying to anything like that. This is, this is literally about the big picture for us. This isn't about. You know, again, making it somebody else's problem. We'll, we're willing to jump in headfirst and and do whatever it takes to make this work. I just think, can we give it a shot?
I, I know, I'm not going to speak for Sage Engineering or the applicant. I would just. Say, Steve, that I feel like, even if they did put forth that effort and did all the mathematics to make it technically work for the bylaw. That as soon as it went in front of our safety officers within town, they would object. That the. The issue of multiple vehicles potentially trying to turn left and right onto Vining Hill, both from. Your private driveway, the daycare driveway, the commercial loading dock driveway, the Biggie and Ocean State driveway, the C V S driveway. All of those entrances and exits together make for a bigger safety issue. In total than what possible safety issues. The two residential homes might have merging onto a commercial driveway halfway down your personal driveway. If if that works, those work, makes sense, but you're going to have drop off and pickup happening a couple of times a day. That you might have to interfere with there where the two driveway types meet. Versus the safety concern of our police and fire department when it comes to those roadways leading onto Vining Hill. I just.
I I I respect that a hundred percent, but at the same time.
It's not gonna, I don't think it's gonna, even if we were able to say now, let's edit this plan to try to make it work for you. Even if we were able to get that technically on the plans, it's not going to get approved that way. I'm not trying to, to poo poo your idea. I'm just trying to be realistic.
I I understand, but at the same time, you got to remember, these are our homes. These are homes that that we can't get to when it's busy and. We're trying to come up with a solution to that. And and again, so someone in one of the homes has a heart attack. So again, police and fire, perfect example. It's right at prime time drop off. So now they have to sort through drop off traffic to get to those residential homes. Rather than go down a private way and get directly to those homes in seconds versus minutes, which is life and death in those scenarios. Uh, uh, again, I respectfully disagree. I I think that mixing the two creates more of a problem. You're talking hundreds of cars. For pickups and drop offs versus three or four cars on a private drive.
Any um, any other comments from the board?
I think we looked at this. Long enough.
Any other comments on the public? Yes.
I've just been following this as it's been going on here for a couple of months now here. To me, it's, um, I tend to agree with with uh, this authority here that you're trying to sort of.
And I, but they do have the right to do it. Um, it's the, it's the ultimate. End of it, right? And they, it's a, it's a daycare which. Um, you know, has preference over zones in town and it's it's properly in that zone. Um, and so they have the the right. That's why I only have to come in for a site plan review. So, you know, I don't, from a, from a design standpoint, I'm sure there'd be better lots to put it on, but that's. The reality of what they've chosen to do. Alright, so let's do a um. This is a site plan review, so we need to. Vote.
Motion to endorse.
Yep, and, but I think with the condition. So do I hear a motion to endorse the plan with the condition that any. Legal document related to an easement or right of way be reviewed. Legal document related to an easement or right of way be reviewed. By both town council and provided to the. Abiding homeowners for their, you know, review or or review by legal counsel.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Richard Singer, second.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Okay. Thank you. So just leave those over there and we'll.
I think this is your copy.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. All right, um. Sure. Seven oh seven, uh, parcel two point one, Sodom Mountain Road. Site, uh, special permanent site plan approval, uh, decision. Let me pull it up. Everybody should have a copy of it in. I believe.
Oh, the decision.
Everybody should have a copy when I.
So this is uh. Concluded Sodom Mountain Road. Okay. That was the house site.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Hearing is still, hearing is still open, right? Did we close the hearing on this? I don't think so.
That's what I'm just looking for. Um, I don't think we did.
I think we aired on the side of.
I think we left it open so that we can close it and then do the decision and approve it at the same time. Um, is my memory, but let me just look and see.
Motion to close the hearing was done by Marcus.
Did we close? We closed. Oh, no, you know, I take that back. We closed the hearing, but we didn't do the decision. We didn't vote. That's what we did. Uh, yes.
Oh, it says it in the decision. Close August tenth, twenty twenty one. Is that August tenth, Jessica?
Yes, that was our last meeting.
Okay.
So we close the hearing and we just need to vote on it. And I'd like to just, I wanted to combine the decision and the vote so that we know we're voting on specifically.
And everybody's eligible to vote?
Uh, everybody is eligible to vote. Um, it's a pretty straightforward. Special permit. I mean, it's putting a residential property in a AC zone.
Right.
You know, it was sweet. We.
Yeah.
I think we just hung it hung around because conservation.
Oh, we were waiting for their.
Or was it the state? I forget, but it was one or the other. Um.
Well, we had two.
It was, yeah, and then it changed.
Right, but that's what it was hanging around for. Um.
There was no problem that we had with the site plan.
We have conditions above and beyond.
The conditions are simply the basic residence ones about, you know, the other permits that you need from health and building inspector. Maintenance of the driveway surface and drainage. Um. I think that's about it, other than your basic. Oh, is it two years or three years?
Two for special permit.
Can't remember what I.
There was an extension at one time, the governor.
Right, but it's.
Granted, but that's.
It's gone.
Far away.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So. September seventh, twenty twenty three, yeah. Just let me know when everybody's on set.
They're too good. They've three good, three good.
You can take your time.
We can't forget. Well, Mr. Sutton won't see a copy of this.
Uh, he does not. Uh, does he need to vote on this one?
Was Jessica designated?
Just hold it up in front of the camera, Marcus.
Which camera? Can you see it now?
Your aim, your aim is terrible.
Let me just do the permissions. Here, Dave, we're going to just share it quickly. So everybody can see.
This is, this is amazing.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Jess. There you go. All right. Mr. Sutton.
Yeah.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
Are you a speed reader?
We're gonna need to be.
Procedural history is what it is. Um. Findings are just the, as usual, the um, sort of. Uh, specifics of the actual property and that it'll be served by Sodom Mountain Road being of suitable gravel paved with great layout. Drainage accepted by the planning board for access purposes. Um, special permit criteria. You know, the gist of it being that it is a residential property. Um, you know, in an AC zone, it certainly is allowed in that zone with a special permit. And the character of that zone, especially where this is, um, there's not much else over there. What's that? Dave?
I'm all set.
All right, you don't know the next.
I think he's all set.
So. Uh, as I. Mentioned the special findings before, there really isn't much because of it's it's just a residence. We have. The details of the driveway and the footprint, um, and uh. Basic requirements of of electrical and uh emergency services, electrical utilities and emergency services. Uh, exception to the stormwater. Requirement, um, and as I mentioned before, you know, Sodom Mountain Road being adequate. Uh, and the H twenty rated stream crossing to be constructed as per the site plan. Anything else, Dave Sutton?
Yep, I'm good.
All right, and then there weren't any terms and conditions that were unique to this other than your standard terms and conditions. All right, uh, so we'll do a roll call or we'll take a motion uh to. Prove this special permit. With the terms and conditions noted in the uh written decision, then we'll vote on the written decision.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Richard Singer, second.
Do a roll call vote. Uh, actually, we don't need to do it. I guess we do need to do a roll call. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
You can I.
Jessica Dorton, I.
Okay, um, and so then we'll do a motion to accept the um indecision we just reviewed. Um, do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Richard Singer, second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
He's been I.
Jessica Dorton, I.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so that's all set. Seven oh eight. Not requiring approval. Uh, Mr. Goddard, might quickly run through this.
Sure. Davis, um, property that has frontage on Bugby. Claus Anderson and College Highway. So if we'll this uh. That's right. This is Bugby going down to College Highway. This is a larger uh interior agricultural acreage. You can kind of see on the locust plane right here. So their proposed uh A and R lot is a portion of the frontage along Bugby. Essentially where the last housing lot is, and this is the next uh two hundred or so feet. Uh, establishing another individual house lot.
So if that's the current existing lot that's at the bottom of them.
That's correct. I think that's uh number nineteen. Uh, or right there. And uh, so this is. Uh, this is woodland, no apparent uh impediments to access. Uh, wetlands are. At least by aerial signature, more than two hundred and fifty feet off.
R forty zone.
Yes.
Questions from the board? All set?
End of the meeting?
Yeah, why don't we do that so we can do stuff along? Uh, yep, do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps, make a motion to endorse the Google not required plan on Bugby Road.
Richard Singer, second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
He's been I.
Okay. It's all sets. Uh, seven ten. One fifteen Fred Jackson Road Stormwater Management Permit Public Hearing. So this should be reasonably. Uh, do you have the folder for that? I can read it.
I do. So that you're disturbing more than one acre of the in this project. Which we've seen before.
All right, um, was is hereby given in accordance with the provisions of Master Law Chapter forty eight, section eleven. That the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty one at seven ten P M in the land use. Hearing room at four fifty four College Highway South of Mass on an application by Kevin and Sean Solak for a stormwater management permit for the property located at one fifteen Fred Jackson Road. Zone as residential forty R forty. The property is shown on accessories map eighty five parcel one. The applicant proposed to construct. Stormwater management features associated with family dwelling for an estate lot and common driveway. In accordance with the code of South Lake zoning by law chapter one eighty five, sections nine, ten, twelve, twenty one, thirty point one, thirty six point one. Uh, zoom information is given. A copy of the application translated inspected by contact planner at his uh John Goddard at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and then be designated by the director of the planning board. Okay, um. And just so we can move this along, we got comments from. How do we have, Dennis?
Oh, for a stormwater, uh, Dennis is, that's a good question. Let me ask that question first.
Okay.
Dennis is assisting with the conservation commission as a uh a temporary consultant.
Dennis Clark.
Dennis Clark. Uh, so.
Okay. All right, and so Dennis has indicated that in order conditions has been issued for one fifteen Fred Jackson Road. Um, reference to the conditions issued by the E P for this project. Okay. Scott has reviewed it. You can take a look. Um. Uh, I'm fine with the stormwater management issues you're handling. I have no input to offer. That's from the building inspector. And. Prior to employment's, our talented stormwater coordinator has written to the so the planning board. Uh, saying. Southwood DPW has reviewed the stormwater management permit application documents dated August nineteenth, twenty twenty one. And filing plans for one fifteen Fred Jackson Road and providing the requested feedback under section one eighty five dash thirty six point one for the forthcoming public hearing on the matter. EPW previously reviewed the proposal in March twenty one, provided comments dated March twenty second, twenty one. Received response comments from Arlevic Associates Inc. on April twelfth, twenty twenty one. And provided follow up emails dated April twenty first, twenty twenty one, indicating that DPW concerns had been satisfactorily addressed. The correspondence has been attached for your reference. Uh, the current plans and application documents do not depict a substantive change since the review at initial submission to the planning board. Thus, DPW has no further comments for or requests from the applicant at this time. Okay. Who's on for?
See Ryan Nelson on the line? There's a chance he's the eight six oh number.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't you, you want to take a look at this here?
So the state issued uh. A certification. Which is quite detailed and voluminous.
That's.
So that's going to be required part of their. Permit.
That's correct. Their permit conservation, as you will. When we get to discussing draft uh conditions that was that is referenced. Uh, in that just in that draft decision.
Okay.
Um, is Ryan on the line?
Hello, can everyone hear me now?
There we go.
Yeah, Ryan, we can hear you now.
Hey, everyone. Uh, Ryan Nelson from Arlevic Associates. Um, it sounds like you guys had a good summary so far. This has gotten conservation approval already. Um, we're proposing a single family home. Most of it's going to be built on grade. Um, some minor stormwater management improvements. Um, you know, roof leader water is going to uh. Proposed rain garden areas. We have a cross culvert underneath the driveway that's been required per D E P. Doing some wetland replication. Um, we've gotten approval from N H G S P for endangered species. Uh, like John Goddard said, we've addressed all the other comments. Um, we do have a four oh one water quality to ask D E P, which is very detailed in sequence. And it was thoroughly reviewed. I had a many talks with David Fowles about the project. We're disturbing about two and three quarters of an acre. Uh, most of it's already on already cleared land. Uh, with the exception of the proposed septic area would be new, you know, current forested land that would have to be cleared. Matt, I'm happy for any questions.
If anybody here, we had an issue, technical issue, so we're sort of. Doing this the best we can here. If anybody needs to see these, I think we may even have plans here, but I we can turn off the lights or it could be seen better. If anybody is interested in taking a look at the site plan here. Um. All right, anything else, Ryan, that you needed to add to this?
Uh, nope, that's it for now.
Conservation uh was the last item, uh, last meeting. And this uh little stormwater feature was just something I ran across in preparing to close this out. So that was kind of brought it back to the forefront. I think really all permanent concerns have been addressed for this project.
Okay. Um, any board members have any comments? Any uh town officials have any comments? All right, anybody in person here have any comments? Anybody on Zoom have any comments? Just use your um. Raise hand function if you could. And actually, why don't you stop the screen share? Let's see it here. Um, all right. So do I hear a? Motion to close this here.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Take me a second. I will do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Dave's been I.
Mr. Sutton.
Dave Sutton, I.
Just the four and I.
Okay. Um, so do you have the?
Um, so this is just for the stormwater.
Yep, this is just for the stormwater.
Yeah.
Stormwater.
You want to share it with them, Sutton?
Will you recuse from it? So he's on here.
Okay, so we'll just add to the decision that that dick is, um, uh, accused that's in a fight. All right.
I'm also if you want to be consistent and let the associate member.
Oops.
What's your, your associate?
Associate.
And not.
Um, we also need to change the management.
What?
We'll cross that.
But, um, it looks good.
So you want to just, uh, scroll through that so something can see it and I'll sort of marry it to go along.
Sure then.
Um, so Dave Sutton, just, uh, we have the, you know, procedural history here as usual. Will we change that Dick is not a voting member having recused himself? Let's hop onto the next page. Uh, that's okay. Findings, uh, again, factual statements about the property served by Fred Jackson Road, which is suitable for access purposes. Um, opposed to creating a stated common driveway. Uh, specific findings, uh, again, same standard features there. Um, noting that they received approval from the conservation commission, uh, under an order condition for D E P. Uh, if you go down to the decisions, um, again, this is stormwater, so it's straightforward. Uh, granting a special permit. Nope. Granted, these stormwater management, in accordance with the terms and conditions stated below.
Yeah, yeah. This isn't on the wellhead, right?
Uh, no, no, it's still the west.
In our decision.
Page two. Yeah, we just got to take off the special permit site plan approval. Yes.
Oh, this whole section on two. Just a stormwater management permit. Got it.
All right. So keep going down, terms and conditions. Uh, again, about as straightforward as you can get, uh, with stormwater here. Um, board of health, other boards, responsible for, um, you know, maintaining surface and drainage features. Uh, this is three years, right?
Yeah.
Somewhere.
I see you have twenty twenty-four. Thinking twenty twenty-three.
I'm not as concerned. This is non-substantive, so I'm not.
I'd go twenty-three.
But, um, I just can't remember. Submitting an aspilts, um, is required as condition. I think that's about it. Keep going down. Yep. All right. Dave Sutton, you good?
Yeah.
Right. Uh, so we'll do a vote on, uh, approval of the stormwater management permit as noted in with the condition, terms and conditions in the written decision.
As we close the hearing?
Did close the hearing, did we?
I don't know.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jess.
Uh, do I hear a motion to, um, uh, approve, um, a stormwater management permit for this property?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Hey, it's been a second. Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Dave Sutton, I.
He's been I.
Just the four and I.
Okay. Um, oh, you know, then yeah, you were, Dick put it out, put it on the record that he was accusing himself on this one, so.
Right. So.
Yep, so we'll just make those changes.
You got it.
All right, next, seven fifteen P M, two seventeen College Highway Stormwater Management Permit. Uh, public hearing. You have the notice. Looking at that.
This is great for us.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, that the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-one, at seven fifteen P M. In the land use hearing room at four fifty-four College Highway South of Mass on an application by Lulu and Anthony Hanush for a stormwater management permit for the property located at two seventeen College Highway. So business property is shown on accessories map one forty, parcel twenty-five. The applicant posed to construct a daycare facility in accordance with the code of Southwood Zone by law, chapter one eighty-five, section thirty-six point one, thirty-seven. Uh, zoom information given a copy of the application that fans may be inspected by contacting the comp planer, John Goddard at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and man designated by the authority chairperson of the planning board. We have an email from, uh, Dennis Clark, uh, indicating that the revised plans for two seventeen College Highway do not need amendment to the order of conditions issued by the conservation commission as all modifications are outside of conservation jurisdiction. We have an email from Randy Brown at D P W saying that D P W reviewed the revised plans and stormwater management report for two seventeen College Highway. Stamped August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, as prepared by Furo Engineering, provides the following initial comments. One, the water meter pit should be located at the property line along Vining Hill Road, not at the building as shown on the plans. And the building inspector has indicated that he is fine with the stormwater management issues, um, being handled by the planning, the comp planer and had to offer. Um, okay, so Brian, anything you want to offer on this one?
No, I think everything is in parallel with the path of the plan or the site.
All right. I mean, we, we went through everything when we did the special permit. This is simply just.
The site plan review.
Uh, the site plan, I'm sorry, the site plan review. So, um, John, any comments?
No, uh, this, although the end result is kind of the same though, we just looked at for once Fred Jackson, a different set of, uh, we call it, it was a historic miscommunication. Uh, I ran across, saw that all the materials, um, were present, but the found just wasn't formalized. Have a hearing for this item. Um, but just as with, uh, one fourteen Fred Jackson, it's already gone through, uh, through the process of the conservation, um, the D P W is a real stormwater. Far as I sit, the conservation, D P W, um, technology, you can satisfy concerns. What are your thoughts, Mike?
No. Okay. Um, all right, any board members have any comments or questions on this one?
Just in the decisions, got the same wellhead.
Just on the decision.
Yeah, we'll go. And actually.
Take out the special. Well, it's just a site plan and stormwater.
Oh, it's just a storm.
Or I should, yeah, just take a site plan off it or two.
Uh, just pull it up on the.
And again, it's associate.
You're gonna find, you're probably gonna find that more than twice.
All right. Any, um, town officials have any comments? Any audience members in person have any comments? Okay, anybody on Zoom have any comments? Okay, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Richard, sing a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard, sing your eye.
David Sutton, I.
He's been I.
Just the four.
Okay. So, um, yeah, we'll pull up the decision, Dave Sutton, you can take a quick look through it. Um, again, it's almost exactly like the ones we just did.
Uh, I think we need that.
With the same correction.
Too exactly, actually.
We're going to do, uh, Mr. Browns.
And yes, that's, we gotta, um.
It's only in the business B zone. It's not in the residential forty, our forty zone.
Uh, there's a portion.
Under re, oh, there is a portion?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
All right, uh, so good, Mr. Sutton, we'll go through procedural histories. Forward, um, we'll look into the findings, again, factual information about the property. Uh, search by finding.
Number one, number one, it says three point six acres and has fifty feet of frontage on Fred Jackson Road.
We'll correct that to.
Are we going to say how many acres or we're not going to bother? Um, just the frontage.
You can grab it from the other decision, right? Plan. All right, John.
College Highway.
I'm sorry, where am I working?
Two seventeen College Highway.
So we have frontage on Vining Hill and College Highway for that site.
We need, we didn't, uh, has to be College Highway for the, uh,
Yeah.
proper amount of.
Is it three point six acres? Is that right?
I will double check the math.
It's got a lot of frontage, College Highway.
Approximately two hundred and forty-one feet.
Approximately?
Two hundred and forty point six.
All right.
Wasn't this proof by someone?
Um, no, I.
That's not exactly true.
There was.
Weekend to do that.
It was emailed to a member of the planning board.
Just a member?
Who we're supposed to look at it today.
Yeah. Yeah, we should get him a week ahead, right?
And then.
Tell the second, send it out.
Yeah. No, it's my, it's on me. I, the day got away from me.
I'll keep it to school.
Uh, which is why we're doing this. All right. Perfect. Uh, why don't we keep going through? Daycare, great, one acre, um, designed to manage stormwater runoff. Uh, got the emergency vehicles line, um, building department and D P W have reviewed the application materials, uh, satisfied with it, and received approval from the Southwood Conservation Commission, uh, under order conditions.
Are those the right order of conditions?
We can, we can confirm the actual numbers after, I mean, if, if.
I don't know.
You know, we'll make sure that the right ends. It's not, you know, everybody cutting the pacing.
Oh, yeah.
Um, all right, same decision as above, though we, and then terms and conditions, let's put in the, um, water meter pit. And, no, not in there, right? Oh, yeah, they got.
This is the stormwater.
Yeah, and so, and then the conditions will indicate that, uh, if you go down to, let's say, I, that will say, um, the water meter pit will be located at the property line along Vining Hill Road. Uh, and reflected in the site plans.
Is that through this decision or the?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that's right. This is a special permit. The other one was site planned.
There's no issue with that, Brian, I say.
And are you changing in the current number five, the expiration date or lapse date to twenty twenty-three?
It is. All right. Uh, in Southwood.
Did we change the Fred Jackson one to twenty twenty-three?
Yep. Uh, keep going down. Off state. All right, as both submitted. Mr. Sutton, you good?
Yeah.
All right. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the site, uh, stormwater management permit for two seventeen College Highway? With the terms and conditions indicated in this written decision.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Second, second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard, sing your eye.
David Sutton, I.
You know, I.
Okay. Uh, do it, do a motion to approve the, um, written decision. Do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Richard, sing your second.
Roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard, sing your fine.
David Sutton, I.
You know, I.
Okay.
Am I on it or not?
You're not on this one.
Okay.
Right?
Well, you got to cross me all off.
She is.
Oh. Yeah, well, you did a ten. Give you credit for that, right?
You want to do, boss. Just tell me.
All right. So that's all set. Uh, seven twenty, one fifteen Fred Jackson Road. Uh, what do we do? Close it and the decision is that? Where we stood, or do we need to close it?
Uh, just the decision.
Okay.
Uh.
And vote in this decision.
I need to. Fred Jackson.
Okay. Do we have any work here? Anyone here on that? No, that's just, that's just, uh, all right, I'm sorry, it's Ryan. Um, here, hold on, before you go do that, Ryan, um, do you, is there anything you, you need to say about the decision on one fifteen Fred Jackson Road or anything you need to say about one fifteen Fred Jackson Road? Actually, I'm not even sure. We're already closed the hearing, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So what I'm going to do, Ryan, just so you're, for your information, is I'm going to skip on to the next one, um, and we'll come back to that and just throw down the decision afterwards, uh, so that we can get through some of the stuff that people are here for.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right, so seven twenty-five, forty-two Depot Street, continued public hearing. Um, which would also be Ryan. I'm, I you guys still need time? Is that the story about, uh, the, the D P W changes?
That's correct. We're still working through those revisions, um, and addressing those. So yes, ultimately, we'd be requesting for another continuance tonight.
Okay. Um, so I think it's, um, we'll, we'll um, continue it at the end. I, I think with people here, let's just get some comments. If people want to, you know, get a few comments on the record, um, it can allow them to adjust some things if they need to.
And you have a letter.
And I have a letter from, um, to read from Barbara Phelps.
She goes, I am abstaining.
Yeah, so let, um, we've got that folder. I read that in. Um, thank you. I have a letter dated August tenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, from Barbara Phelps to the Southwood Planning Board. Dear board members, I am submitting the following comments for the public hearing on the proposed development of housing at the subject location. I think the developer should donate a piece of, small piece of land in the southeast portion of the property so that the town can utilize the driveway air entrance to the existing house in order to construct a public parking area for the South of Rail Trail. This will enable rail trail users to have a safe parking area rather than working on private land owned by Mark Fletcher and having to cross the busy intersection of, of deep. This will enable rail trail users to have a safe parking area rather than working on private land owned by Mark Fletcher and having to cross the busy intersection of Depot Street, Powder Mill Road and South Long Yard Road to access the rail trail. Also, I'd like you to consider having the developer change the site plan to extend the sidewalk location located in the northeast area of the development eastward to provide access to the Southwood Rail Trail. This will enable residents in the northern portion of the development to have safe and easy access to this public recreational trail. Thank you for your consideration of these comments, Barbara Phelps. Okay, um.
Voice of the Hill, Clinton campaign contracts with Christopher Steele's firm in London to learn.
Other thing to note, um, is. We circulated the traffic study, right?
Yeah, I believe so, they.
Yes, we circulated that or not?
It's all, yeah, that was the one of them.
There was a traffic study done seven years ago.
Old one.
Um, it's not just for that area, but it's for entirety of Depot and.
That's right, a lot of the problem focused on sheep pasture, right?
Yes, so.
I did read.
Um, and oddly enough, in my mind at least, there was, I don't think there was, in a two-year study, there was no accidents at the rail trail crossing, um.
Right.
It was mostly on Powder Mill and on Sheep pasture were the main areas of concern, but there was a traffic study done. Um, it had some recommendations, and I think we're still looking at trying to get some sense of, you know, if there's any potential changes or, you know, signage or markings or anything else that could be changed in that area, um, but. You know, the thing to keep in mind, I think, you know, because we had this discussion last time, is that there's a little bit of balance here because this is a pre-existing problem that is there, uh, you know, to, for the design of that area, it's been something that has been raised before, it's been looked at. Um, it's not so much, um, a, a, a problem that is being generated by this development, nor is it a problem that is going to have a, you know, a real significant impact by a hundred, uh, people living there, or however many cars are going to be there, I don't think it's going to create a huge issue with that design more than what's already there, um, but, uh, you know, we do have a traffic study, and if, if folks feel like coming in and taking a look at it, it is available to, to people to take a look at. Um, all right, so I do want to just get some public comments so we can, again, uh, try to work through any issues that are out there and allow the developer to address necessary, so, um, first, any board comments on this?
Oh, I, yeah, I liked, um, Mrs. Phelps's submission and requests that I think those are possible requests that could be done if necessary, that would certainly help to alleviate the problem, including the safety concerns, because it, a lot of the concerns in that is the transference of pedestrians or bike riders coming unauthorized private property lot and bringing it over, um.
So I think one of the, and I turn this to John O'Ryan, um, you know, I think one, there's a stormwater component for a, is there a catch base in there or something?
Talking about the proximate to the frontage?
Yeah.
Uh, that's right, so I think, why am I speaking?
Yeah.
It's a hard shoot.
Step in, but I mean, I think there was an issue with design there as far as using that space that's right up front, but, um, you know, I, with the suggestion, it can certainly be explored, and we can see if there's anything that can come of it, because I do agree that that's a useful spot, but I just, you know, with the way that property flows, that's probably also a good spot for, you know, catch bases as well, so, um, you know, I think they can work through that and see if that's a possibility. All right, anybody else on the board have any comments? All right, any town officials have any comments? Any members of the public have any comments?
I thought that was a great idea, too.
Thank you. Um, any other members of the public have comments?
That's Capitana fifty-six Southview Drive. Okay, about the state, um, just to be clear, is there going to be a vote tonight, or did you say it could be getting more being done?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a number of comments that were made by the DPW, um, that the developer is trying to incorporate into their site plan. And so they need some more time to get those all incorporated so that, you know, we can have a, a, not a final necessarily, but at least a, a, a plan that addresses those comments. The DPW is accept, you know, finds acceptable, and then we can work from there. Um, so that's the point we're trying to reach, and we haven't gotten there yet. So I did, because people are here, I do want to at least, you know, if there's comments that people want to make, we can talk about it, uh, it can be raised, and maybe that impacts, you know, the developer, but, um, as far as ultimate specifics of the site plan that I get to with the DPW, that's not, we're not there yet.
I'd like to follow up, um.
Sure.
In, in addition, I recall at the end of, of that hearing, being heard asked above, I think, looking at some of the traffic, and I fear, I guess there will be a report on that. And my question on that, and it's maybe just my way of saying, but if you're looking at, say, two hundred cars average, like where there are hundreds, uh, ten, hundred same build. I guess if that to be seen as not having an impact on that, on that tree line, is that, I mean, are there some rules out there, something way back in the way to the numbers and cars and the type of that, not to be.
So, um, you know, and, and to be fair, I'm talking, it's, that was my opinion, uh, in looking at the study, and I'm certainly not a traffic engineer, but, um, you know, I think that given what I saw in that study, um, where the issues really lie or elsewhere, I think it, there were some recommendations in there, I think that things such signage and, and, you know, um. Yeah, I mean, things like that, you know, visual things, uh, maybe even cutting down some of the brush and opening up that area on the, um. That's got to be on the, uh, what's that?
South side.
South side, um, you know, which is a little tight when you're looking in there from that intersection. Um, I, I think, like, if you're coming down Depot to South Long Yard on your right, that can be kind of tight, though, on the left is pretty open, you can see, on the right is, is tight. Um, so, you know, that, I think there can be some things that are addressed, um, but it's to some degree a design issue, and at some degree a pedestrian issue uh, versus the cars, I mean, it's more pedestrians who are, who are either not stopping at the rail trail, or, you know, uh, I, it doesn't. No, absolutely, and so it's, it's, it's what, you know, there's going to be two sides of, for you to do, I mean, you got to do stuff for the cars, but you also got to do stuff for the pedestrians, bike riders, whoever else on the rail trails, right, and what signage and, and what you have there, so, um, you know.
Echo your estimation, I think the, the traffic study listed, like, four thousand vehicle trips through that intersection already, and that was in two thousand and fourteen, so two hundred percent out of already four thousand isn't a great increase, I would, would you agree?
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's, you know, I mean, I, again, it's, I'm just telling you my opinion from having looked at that study, and just where it seems to fit in, but I think there are some things that may be able to be tweaked. Um, if you are putting in that development there, that is going to at least up the number a little bit, um, so I think that that's a connection that can allow for some tweaking.
And, and the four thousand cars took an interesting, too, which is helpful. Um, and then I also recall, like, that you had asked about looking at that buffer area, specifically, um. Make the rail trail, and then the land in which the, um, new development would go, um.
Yes.
There, I, uh, we have some questions about buffer areas and how that might impact the residents of Southview from what they might see, or whatever else, you know, might meet in that development, I, I don't know if it's far away, but I, I think some mentioned about growth and that kind of thing, some footage from to where the development would begin, but it seems to me that you had said something about, look, take a look at that, and so I'm wondering when that also is going to take place, when we address.
That would be something.
More detail again.
Right, that would be something that would be derived from the site plan a lot easier than just talking about it, so when they get to that point, um, and they've made the changes they need to make to address the DPW, then we can kind of look and see whether there's appropriate buffering, you know, uh, because it's, it's sort of put in the cart before the horse if you have the discussion now, because they have to get, they have to deal with those more technical aspects, and then we can sort of figure out, you know, things like the buffering and, and what have you. Uh, but it's certainly, I, 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 that's the way I look at it, but it's also something that I think they'll keep in mind as they're designing it, because it certainly was raised at the last meeting and now is raised tonight. And so, you know, and to me, having some degree of buffer between the rail trail and development is, is, you know, something that is, and, and, and Southview is something that should be done to sort of separate a you know, uh, privacy as well as feel when you're on the rail trail, I think it's useful, so, um, you know, we'll see what comes of the site plan. Thank you, um, any other comments from people here tonight?
Yeah, oh, thirty-three Depot Street, how many cars come down Powder Mill Road and don't stop at the stop sign? Cops give a lot of tickets, some cars at the scope, right, Mark?
Coming onto Depot?
Yep. Check for the cops and see how many tickets they give off the.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things, and this is, I, again, it's, it's. And then, again, this is my opinion, and there's all these board members here, and they can offer their opinion too, but, um, one of the recommendations, I think, is the way that intersection is designed, and, and actually making it more narrow, and cutting down the sort of width of it, so that it's not, people aren't doing that, right, you have really defined places that you're going, and it's more, it's more square. Um, you know, that's something I think that's more long-term, you know, to be funded by the town than to be funded by a developer putting in this, this project here, but, you know, it's something, and again, we can get you a copy of the traffic study to take a look at what they suggest. But I also, again, I, I think I was surprised because I don't love the design of that intersection, but there weren't any accidents there, uh, at least in that two-year period of time, there have been some, I certainly know there have been some, but, um, there at least weren't any in a two-year period of time compared to up in Powder Mill and down by Sheep pasture, so. Uh, any other comments? Cindy does?
Cindy Marshall, four inside, so you're not going, all right, that, the last, last traffic study was in oh fourteen.
I believe that's the date, is that?
Seven years ago, um, you know, and that four thousand cars or whatever was stated, is that go through there, and I'm sure that that's way up from there now. You know, and again, this is.
Why, why do you think that's way up from there?
Um, just from people, you know, just finding that route, you know, people, you know, and there, those aren't all commuters, you know, people do visit our town and go here, go there, so on and so forth. You know, take rides around, so on and so forth, um, but I'm just surprised, you know, I don't think it would hurt to require them, uh, for another independent traffic study, independent. Not somebody they hire, but somebody you recommend for that intersection.
Oh. I guess my question would be, Mr. Phil, is that if we find that there is more traffic, as you suggest, coming through, how does that prevent?
Well, perhaps they could contribute to, um, any future changes that need to be.
Right, but if they're only potentially adding two hundred trips a day to an already established four thousand, or maybe it's six thousand now, as you suggested, it's higher. We're going to ask them to put in when their percentage of contribution is even lower?
Well, you got the bad.
I just, what would you want the end result if, if the town pays for a traffic study?
And the bicycles, I mean, there is no such thing as monitoring pedestrians that, uh, who use these.
There is, and there is in the traffic study, a pedestrian count.
So I would, Cindy, I, we can get it to you, uh, so you can take a look at, I mean, I guess from my viewpoint, it's a, it's not something that requires, so, traffic study may even be a bad word for what they did. They looked at it a little bit broader than sort of like the traffic study that, you know, was done over on, on Cannery, when, it's just counting cars, right, they're not, I don't think that's what's necessary. I'm not, they, they isolated out what they thought was a, a bit of a design issue.
Not barely.
And they sort of, uh, made recommendations regarding that design issue. I'm not sure that even if there was an increase in cars, and I'm not sure there really is, um, especially since the census data came out and the population of Southwood has gone down. I'm not sure there's a, you know, a huge noticeable increase in cars there, but even if there was, I'm not sure that that increase impacts the design issues, right, I think those remain the same, um, by whatever increase in cars there are, so, I, I will get you a copy, I'll, I'll email you a copy of that traffic study if you want, and, and you can take a look through it in, in, at the next meeting if you have questions about it.
I've always felt that just been a very dangerous intersection, no matter for cars, and especially now the bike trail, you know, that is big news so much, you know, now, and it probably was seven years ago.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Diane?
I'll let you email me that, traffic study.
I, I will do so, um, sir.
Right, Diane, will you, thirty-two Southview Road, uh, what time of the year would that be?
Um.
Let me look at it, see if I can find that.
Let me just see if I have it right.
The rail trail pedestrian count were, is data collected on selected days in July ended pockets, including Saturdays, Sundays, and Fridays.
But I, but I just want to keep in mind.
Would you expect there to be higher pedestrian counts not in July and August?
During the school year, yes, definitely.
But for the rail trail?
For the rail trail.
For the rail trail?
For traffic going on Depot Street.
No, this is for the rail trail.
For the rail trail, for pedestrian.
Just, I keep in mind, the people, and I, I should have said this earlier, the folks who did the traffic study, or whatever you want to call it, was the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, it wasn't done by any, you know, hired, uh, company for an applicant or anything like that, this was done, you know, uh, with the town getting the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to do the study, so there was some.
More traffic during September to June than during summer months, of grandparents driving their kids to school.
It depends on where you are, I, I'm not sure I agree with that with Sheep pasture road, but.
Depot Street, yes, there is. There was a lot more traffic during the school year than there is over, than during summer.
Again, what does higher traffic affect this, those?
Yeah. Probably small.
Right.
Okay, all right, any, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Now, I live at ninety-eight South Long Yard Road.
What's your name, sir?
I'm Atlantic, Jack Atlantic. I've been driving that road for twenty years, it's no different today than it was twenty years ago, in terms of what increased traffic, either by the walking trail or kind, I've never seen anybody not stop.
Uh, any other comments, um, Diane? Okay, thank you, um, all right, we have, um, is there anybody else live? Okay, uh, Sandy Barbieri, um, I see your hand up, you can, uh, unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is Guy Barbieri, I'm with seventeen Southwick Hill Road. Um, as point of discussion in review, um, a, a prior, uh, hand was raised regarding the buffer zone between the rail trail. Uh, we have the similar concern on the western side of the property, if you recall, we were talking about an overlay of what, uh, the, the tree line was, and if any of that was going to be affected as part of this development, that was the first order of concern because of the resonance of, um. Depot Square, uh, visual sight lines might be, uh, affected if, if some of that foliage is removed, that's the, the thinner part of where people might be affected, so I just want to remind the board that that was a question raised at last meeting, and, uh, to, to hopefully address those concerns um, as part of the overall discussions when the board reconvenes on the matter, uh, that was number one. Number two, it was also raised that a question was asked if there was a homeowners association proposed with this development to make sure that, and this may not fall into the guidance of the planning board, but to ensure that if something is listed as a one-bedroom, doesn't evolve into multifamily usage, or rental, or any kind of self-governance that might occur with the homeowners association, where we keep the integrity of the property and adjoining properties values intact. So th- those were some of the issues that were raised last time, um, that I hope will be continued part of the discussion in, in the, uh, adjoining, the abutting property of Depot Square.
Thank you, guys. Uh, any other comments, and actually, before I get to that, um, I just looked at the chart. Uh, any other comments? And actually, before I get to that, um, I just looked at the chart, the actual. Motor vehicle traffic study uh count, traffic counts were done in April and May of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, so that's that's the data that's being used in this. Again, you can certainly take a look at it, but um. Uh, that's where they got that data from. Um, any other comments? Let me go back to the Zoom and see if there's any. I don't see anybody else. Uh, any other public comments before we continue this on to the next hearing date? Okay, um, what do we have on for?
We've got two hearings, seven, ten and seven point.
What's which ones are, or what are those two? I don't even know the order, but what are they?
One twenty five Sheep pasture road state lot.
Yep.
And Fiore Greens West.
All right. So why don't we put this at seven forty five? Do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing for forty two Depot Street to seven forty five on September twenty first?
Come on, I pick up soon.
Second?
Dave's being a second.
Uh, all of you, favor say aye. All right. So that'll be September twenty first at seven forty five P M. And hopefully we'll have the. Site plans uh done at that point in time. Um, eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Uh, forty one fifty one John Mason Road. Continued public hearing and decision. All right, um. So. Need public hearing on the disc golf course amendment. You got two things in today. Now, I guess I'll say Diana, it came in and it was circulated, emailed out to the board. So to the extent they read it, you know, they did, uh, they didn't, they didn't, but, you know, it is what it is. And there's a comment that I can just read it. It's short. To from Jessica Pelly. At a, at five ten P M, uh, I cannot make the meeting tonight. I want to clarify that any previous correspondence received from me was. Written in collaboration with a group of neighbors that are in opposition to the special permit modification being requested for New England Disc Golf Center, whether the last correspondence was signed or not. The concerns of the residents are the expanding of the business, my adding food alcohol and additional recreation activities which would increase traffic on the street. They are concerned about the hours of operation changing. John Mason Road is located in a rural residential neighborhood and is in disrepair, while the state of our street and its classification is completely separate issue. It does. Have significant relevance to the proposed modification. There are countless documents stating that the street is unaccepted and owned by the residents. I'm asking the planning board to consider all the factors that have been brought before you during the public hearings before you make your decision. Thank you for your time, Jessica. So, uh, the only other new development um is. You appeared at the Board of Health meeting and whatever date that was set up.
August nineteen, just for the record, Randy Brown, ninety five, Red Jackson, room.
Thank you.
Fred Brown, thirty nine John Mason.
Thank you. Um, so you appeared at the Board of Health meeting. Um, I was also present there. Um, the Board of Health, uh, obviously there wasn't an application or anything that they tell, and 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 Diana, you were there with a client. And you can certainly correct me if you have a different opinion about it, but the way I took it was that the Board of Health. Clarified any issues that there were as far as uh their, you know, the authority of Tammy Spencer and and they considered. Um, you know, and offered their opinion on what they thought was necessary for this project. They certainly still have the grant of permit that has to be applied for, I believe, right? Um, with the Board of Health, and that's certainly something that would be an added decision, but. Um, you know, clarified any issue with Tammy Spencer, sort of speaking on behalf of the board, and well, it's considered it. As a, as a board as a whole. So I think they sort of did both things, however you see it, necessary um in this, in this. Uh, application, I think they've covered all their bases and I, you know, it didn't sound like to me like you had a objection with the Board of Health and the way they dealt with it at the time.
The only point that came up with the Board of Health that I think is relevant, uh, that we haven't talked about yet, you mentioned. Is that the Board of Health had questions about the trailer issue when it was a trailer and that at that hearing, it looks like Mr. Brown shared with them a picture of a food truck. That he had intended to purchase, and I think they commented, and so that clarification, which was before that board about truck versus trailer, uh, I thought was significant.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't.
I can discuss that this, I don't, I mean, this is the the unit they were looking to to purchase. Not, this is not, this is not the unit, but it's something similar to this. You can see it's, it's got wheels and it's got a trailer hitch on it. So there is a a definition that we should be using instead of a trailer, it's a mobile food unit. So that's the terminology that we should be using there.
Establishment, mobile food establishment.
Yeah, and that's how the various.
But this is.
For lack of a better word, food trucks that you see around Southwick that has sort of been allowed by the Board of Health to date, um, you know, I I, the one that Howard's is the one that jumps to mind. Cause I think it's similar, the one at Westfield Brewing is similar to this as well.
And this has always been the intent, regardless of the language, has always been the intent of a food truck or food unit, whatever you want to call it. For now, it's a mobile food unit or establishment.
That's because there there are state regulations that go along with that definition that require whatever. You know, sanitary, this and that, water supply, you know, safety issues with cooking or whatever, so.
So we talked about this unit with the Board of Health. We talked about our existing operations using porta potties. We want to continue that with our new use, new uses, um, and the Board of Health had no concerns or questions about that at this, at this point, so. They were fine with everything that we had proposed to them, well, what we're doing today, what we're looking to do with this modification.
So that was the only sort of outstanding action item that I saw from the discussion last time. Um, Marcus, did you have any questions on that? I know you're the one who's.
No, unfortunately, they don't record their meetings or their recordings are not available and their minutes are over a year behind, so. I wasn't able to attend a meeting, so I depend on your report and what Randy's saying, and I think, you know, that helps. Understand the trailer situation. It's not a trailer, it's a mobile food establishment. Which, you know, is the legal technical term that's. The trailer went off in another direction, obviously, you know, referring to use of trailers. So I think that helped at least the uh Board of Health meeting with that clarification. And if they're okay with the use, continued use of porta potties, that that was another item that was a condition in the original permit. That you had one year to uh use the porta potties and then it was either going to be revisited or replaced with, you know, permanent facility, so. I guess that's another thing that you have to think about. But if the Board of Health is okay with it, they're the responsible authority for our health and safety, so.
Well, and if I can just clarify, the Board of Health did not take any vote or approve anything at their meeting. They just had a general discussion.
Right, so I think their position was they don't have an application in front of them, so that they couldn't consider anything. Um, but, you know, I I. I think the general tenor of their discussion was that they didn't have concerns as it was presented to them, um, you know, with the issues that we had talked about with the porta potties and.
Ms. Spencer's position, and that was, that's what we were clarifying, is whether the board supported her position.
Correct, and and they did that. I mean, they had asked, would you like a letter of support? And I said, yeah, that'd be great, but then they kind of deferred to, okay, we'll just refer to, we'll defer to the letter that you already received from Spencer. So they 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 kind of gave their stand for approval on that, on that email, I let it Jerry.
All right, um, any other questions or issues that from board?
My only thing is, do we get any other insight and? The I don't talk about it a little bit, didn't have much to go on of the previous point, we were with a permit specifically said no alcohol sales. I mean, any more thoughts about the.
I talked with Ross Terry on the phone. She said, uh, look at the record, which I did, and. There's not a lot in the minutes. I looked at the minutes from March two thousand sixteen until. Uh, August of two thousand sixteen. And at the August sixteenth meeting, there was discussion of a lockbox for security where people could deposit money.
Yep, we have that.
Yeah, and then it just said, no alcohol served on the premises. And a sign discussed, and a hearing was closed.
See, I just don't.
So it's not recorded, you know, there's no recordings from that August sixteenth uh meeting, so.
I don't, I don't think.
Anyway, that's, that's how, I mean, that's where it came into the record and then it appears in their decision, so.
Yeah, so I don't think there's much discussion on it because it wasn't contested, right? I mean, it was a condition to be put in. Um, that you all weren't seeking to do at the time, so, um, you know, it wasn't a contested issue, so it just became.
And it wasn't an area where we were at in in the business, you know, the the, they said that we didn't, uh, couldn't, we couldn't sell any food. Because we didn't have a building for it, so it was all, you know, so that's where we started. You you got to start a business somewhere and and a business just doesn't stay stagnant if a business grows.
Well, that's, I mean, that's my memory of the. Hearing, I wasn't there on the day that the decision was um deliberated and, you know, signed, so I, you know, I don't know what happened, but that's my memory of them. It just wasn't an issue, so it wasn't really something that we spent a lot of time discussing. Okay, um, any other um comments before I close the hearing, Diane?
I can just make one very brief comment. Um, we do urge the board to consider that over forty five members of the Southwick community have signed petitions and spoken out against this proposal. If the board is inclined to go against their wishes, we just strongly ask that the board consider putting a one year renewal permit uh on onto any permit that may issue. All of us are trying to predict the future. What happens if we do this? And we told you what we think, the grounds have told you what they think, but really the best evidence, if if you're inclined to go that route, is, is, let's see. So we would ask for a one year uh provision to be placed there and beyond that, just for the board to to make sure you're clarifying what what by law you're voting under, so we can review it, and we appreciate your consideration.
All right, um. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Jessica, four and seven.
If we have the opportunity, I might as well take it, uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps abstained.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica, four and aye.
Okay, so this hearing is closed, um. So. I'm just looking through a draft decision. You can vote on. So. I know what it was. There was a period of time where. Special permit criteria, the seventeen factors weren't listed in special permits, and this was one of those times, and I've. Taken to put those in with the reasoning behind it. So I may want to do that, send a new permit. But. So let me just think about the best way to do this. I thi- I, my opinion is that. Voting. On. The application with a written decision in front of you is probably the best um method of doing it. You know, I think we could do that, but I think it would probably be ideal to have the. You know, specific special permit criteria and the findings associated with that in there. Um, when we're doing the voting. So my inclination would be that this has to be. The vote has to be continued to the next meeting where we have something in front of us, but let me at least. Run through the sort of conditions and make sure that we're all on the same page so that we're not just spending too much time at the, when we actually have to vote on it. And I can, I mean, I, you know, I don't want to. Certainly, I mean, anybody speak up as far as anything else. I mean, I, I can tell you my opinion on it, which is that, uh, to me, this is not so much a planning board issue as it is a. Issue and in select board issue. Is.
One of it.
Uh, than a planning board issue, so I I. Nation is to um. Is to grant a permit with the. Uh, you know, conditions that require those, those. Um, I don't see this as, it's much different than any other golf course or facility like that in town. Um, I can't, I can't wrap my head around the idea that if you wanted to go drink, that you'd go to. A, a, you know, mobile food establishment uh in the middle of the woods uh with porta potties to go do that rather than go to. Westwood Brewery or, you know, someplace like that. I just can't, that does not, I mean, you know, it's not that, that there's any problem with, you know, having it there and providing that service to the people who are. Customers there, but I don't see it as a, that's, that's the reason why you would go to.
Neither do we.
To the disc golf course. I mean, I think it would be a sort of accessory used to, to what you're going there for. I just, I can't, I can't imagine. Why that would be your choice, um, if you had choices in, you know. So, um, so that's, that's the sort of mindset that I'm coming from, at least when I'm looking at this, um.
Well, it's interesting.
Cause we write the decision as we approve this, the. Modification to allow the food and beverage truck and the definition of what beverages are allowed is granted by the select board and whether or not they decide to grant.
Yeah, I think we need to include a specific condition related to the mobile food establishment. However, you or the planner wants to look at the state law and pull out some things.
That's not.
You know, the planning board would be uh. Interested in or concerned, and uh, under item ten, the current one says the use of the alcohol shall be prohibited. So if we strike that out. And not refer to use or sale and just let it go to another authority. That would be a decision that the planning board would make, and that's your favor of taking out that.
Yeah, we're not the proper authority to determine whether or not uh this there. We're allowing the use of a food and beverage truck. The food and beverage truck truck can have soft drinks, it can have water, it can have snails. It could have all those things and a couple of locker options provided by a locally sourced brewery and, you know.
So on the uh, also on the mobile. Food. Unit, uh. We could look at specifying. The months that it would be there, hours of operation, or just say it would coincide with the hours of operation of the disc golf course. There needs to be a condition with some text to it.
So if it just said that it coincides with the hours and months of operation of the disc golf course only, is that sufficient? And at least what you're thinking about it.
Point, yeah. And then the consideration of reviewing this in a year. Uh, is that worthwhile uh? Based on the septic issues also, if they're selling on quite a bit of beer, that kind of has a tendency to.
Isn't that a job, isn't that a job for the select board, Derek Marcus?
Yes, there, the liquor licenses, but the uh facilities that are available not.
Well, it's not a planning board or a board of health issues.
Right.
I just, I.
Do we follow up on that?
No, no, I'm saying it's related to reviewing this in one year.
And how many of these, these type of applications do we have that kind of contingency on?
I don't know.
Or even just.
Well, it just, it just, it just seems that you just abstained from a vote, and now you're being extremely controlling over this issue, I'm having a little bit of a hard time with it.
From closing the hearing, I felt the hearing should remain open. That's what I abstained from, I didn't abstain from voting on the special permit.
Okay, so that's fine. I so I would say let's just be specific as to what we're talking about. Uh, if it's going to have any sort of year or otherwise limitation or revisiting, I think at a minimum, it should be specific to an issue or two issues and not the permit as a whole, right? I mean, you have the authority, I guess, to revoke the permit, but I, I don't want to conduct this hearing you know, every year.
No, it's, it's item six, it's, it's a rewrite of item six, the original item six.
What was the original?
Which was very, which was vague and the applicant didn't know who to request.
Right, and, and I think Marcus, if, if that we looking at this for the amount of time that we've looked at it, it was pretty clear that that was not an intentional inclusion, it, it, we, it's part of that language where a recreational commercial facility has to stay permitted with authority, we included that language without a mechanism to follow up. So that original inclusion, we should, that shouldn't be part of that, like, we're not modifying a
Well, I think we should improve it.
Okay, but then it's what end?
And be more specific.
So let me just ask you this, because uh, you know, I, I don't I don't want to do this hearing after a year. Right, I mean, I don't.
We wouldn't do it, it would be under regular business.
How are you?
You'll, you just leave in, you take out the first sentence and just leave in the, the, the rest of it. The planning boards shall review reports of inspection or recommendations from the building inspector for health and any other town departments and consider public comments. We're just reviewing under regular business, not a public hearing, not a modification.
All right. So that's, I mean, I guess.
I just want to, I, yeah, trying to play it forward, so a year from now, Mr. Goddard is gonna say, hey, this one random permit that we have, that we don't have this condition for any other special permits we do, he's going to initiate emails to the Board of Health, Public Safety and say, oh, I did get a, I did get a phone call that there was traffic problems, I don't what is he gonna have to get in hand for us to say, oh, we really do need to review this special permit and trash it, or redo it, or have another applicant, bring the applicant back in? Under what authority are we bringing them back in? And if there is a problem with the porta potties, that doesn't, shouldn't come to us, that should go to the Board of Health. And they should be able to say to the Browns, hey, you know, we gave you the approval here for the porta potties, but it's starting to look like an issue, I can't imagine that they're just missing it.
And that's, I mean, that's the other, that's the second part of it, right, is, is
we can.
What are you reviewing, because what you're reviewing seems to be the purview of either the Board of Health or they, you know, the licensing for, whether it's the state or the, the select board, I mean, it seems to be it seems to be what you're asking to be reviewed, and that's not necessarily our purview.
You know, if the police get reports of traffic or alcohol issues, they're not gonna come to us, they're gonna go to the select board.
It also strikes me as, to some degree, a business issue, right? I mean, if, if, if they throw their business and get to the point where you know, porta potty or even two porta potties is not something that their customers want, and it's becoming problematic, then they're look at a septic system. They'll put something in, I mean, I, you know, and it, but it's also a board of health issue, I mean, I, I issues with it, it's not seems like it's something that would, in all likelihood, be sort of corrected by the course of business, but also would be controlled by the, by the Board of Health and not the planning board, but
we, I think, the Board of Health, you know, septic systems, um, and alcohol licenses, or any of those, but there's other aspects here which the residents uh, you know, uh, uses by, you know, excessive noise, or, you know, just traffic issues or other things that do fall into our purview. I'm gonna ask, I'll be here, just figuring out exactly how this will come together a year from now when somebody but I think there are some aspects of the decision that are planning and I agree that, yeah, I'm trying to look at my crystal ball here, I don't have a real good one on this one. Um, because it's in a residential zone, primary, really, just because I realize I'm a little more sensitive to it than, say, if this is not college Tyler. Um, so I think it's reasonable in interest of caution. Uh, so, you know, I'm gonna say, look, and see how, see how things are going.
So and part of it too would be, I would have to have compounds or look at the legality of it, but if there was something that said that that I guess two parts of it, one is that the board would review it. Grab the language of that, but outside of any kind of public hearing or you know, process like that, it would be a board review um, where they could initiate. Like, I, I, I don't, I don't know how you, I don't know what the mechanism is to sort of revoke a special permit, but let's just, let's put that aside for a second.
I don't think.
You're in violation of it as exists now.
Yeah, um, but that's, and that's not a planning board issue to enforce, so it would be, so
Yeah.
we have to figure out the way to structure that, but then I also think that there probably needs to be a, a sunset clause where, you know, you come back a year or two years and then if it's becoming, if it's not an issue and not seeing any real issue, it, it goes away, right? It's not something that runs going forward for some, in perpetuity. Provide everything, I mean, I all right. All right, I mean, I'm happy to keep discussing this, or, you know, I think I have enough to discuss it on paper, or we can discuss it with the written decision.
Yeah, I think striking, you know, number six, striking the first sentence is gonna be helpful, because it, it never happened and it was very vague, there's nothing in the minutes of the meeting as to why that was put in. Uh, but the second part of it, you know, maybe we can uh, add, add some other things in, I mean, the building inspector is a zoning enforcement officer. So if there's anything related to zoning, then he should be involved or, or have some input. But I would just see it as a, a review under routine business. We have to put something uh, as a reminder on the calendar. And uh, the applicant, of course, is responsible to uh to help in getting. All right, I think.
But I also, but I also don't, I mean then I just gotta think through the legality of it, because.
Well, let town council review it, right, write up something what you think is reasonable and town council should really review the decision if there's a sensitivity to it.
No question that they will, but here's what I'm wondering, right, is what is being enforced, what provision of the special permit is being, it's nice to put in something to review, but what provision are you are you asking to be enforced or reviewed, right, as to whether they're in compliance or not, I mean, that's you can't just review something and generally make a decision as to what you feel about it, I mean, there's, there needs to be a provision that it's to be reviewed and either enforced or.
Well, we have seventeen criteria in a special permit. So I'm sure we can find some language in those seventeen and it's worthy of review. I'll, I'll write something up. You know, take a few minutes.
All right, all right.
And I think it's a good idea, have, have it available to us a week before the meeting. So it can be looked at.
That's, no, that's not me, I mean, that's not me.
You do?
All right, so anything else that we want to, might talk about for the decision? Anything else we want to talk about for this? Marcus?
No, we want to clarify who is eligible as well.
Uh, Dick's the only one.
We have the queues. And the final proposal as to, I think, parking spaces.
I think that's all.
Are we on, is it thirty-three now?
Whatever it is.
Yeah, if it's.
We're adding seventeen. So there's, we're going to forty-seven as a total new.
Forty-seven.
Fine, um, it's language in here. Pro shop for rental and retail related equipment, that's new, correct? No, well, that was. They pick me in designated areas only, that was existing. All right, small scale recreation activities such as volleyball, court house, cornhole, bache, et cetera, in designated areas, that's new. On-site sale of something of food and beverages from a mobile food establishment is new. Those are the two new accessory uses as you characterize them, like, a game of. Is that correct, or is there anything missing from that?
We had this garden area in the front of the property.
Garden.
Garden. You talked to the local farm chair, hit that a partnership. Using some space for farming use.
Okay, so that would just be in there, uh, oh, that's right, so that would be in there, I mean, that's not an accessory, well, that's a additional use of the property. I'm not sure. Okay, all right, I just want to make sure we have anything, uh, anything else on the board? Okay, so we will um put this on the agenda for um next meeting to, and have a written decision which we circulated well in advance of the next meeting. And uh we will finalize that and vote on it at the next meeting. All right. Thank you. Mr. Goddard. Refreshing, ready to go with your what time you want this one? What, I give you five minutes?
Five minutes.
Ten minutes.
I'm gonna have to really expand upon material I have there. Uh, okay. So we can have a public hearing to
is this a public hearing?
Yes.
Oh.
So the attorney, let me, yeah. Preview to this, the Attorney General hasn't approved the new bylaw, correct?
That's correct.
And that timeframe hasn't expired.
Ninety days gone by.
Ninety days from submitted to, I don't believe it has.
Yeah.
Oh, from submittals?
Yeah.
So um, it's close at least, and so we need to get this thing on the books so that we actually, you know, have some stormwater regulations.
And did we take into account the recent flooding of non-flooding areas in these numbers, John?
Well, as a matter of fact.
Wasn't expecting Philly and Queens and mid Jersey to be underwater the past couple of weeks.
I was impressed with the performance in some of the existing stormwater control.
You're in town?
Yes, in town.
Oh, yeah.
I was, I mean, they had water in them, but it didn't, okay.
Completely erode again on the way up the hill from the inn, so look at.
Actually, a good article about the New Orleans and the Army Corps of Engineers and how they rebuilt that and and bunch of numbers, but they were as conservative as possible, and they basically built this for a two-hundred-year storm, and it actually worked.
Down in New York.
So.
The levees helped, but we don't have any, like.
So, uh, eight twenty PM, Town of Southwick Stormwater Regulations, uh, notice hereby given in accordance with the provisions of NGL Chapter forty-one, section eighty-one queued at the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-one, eight twenty PM in the Land Use Hearing Room, Town Hall, Portage de Corvallis Highway, to discuss the adoption proposed stormwater management regulations. The planning board will consider the adoption of a local regulation to serve as a technical manual under the pending chapter one eighty-three Stormwater Management and Erosion and Sediment Control. The bylaw was approved at the May eighteen, twenty twenty-one Annual Town Meeting, Zoom information given, a copy of the proposed regulation may be inspected by contact with Todd Plant or Jack Goddard. It's one number or email, any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed amendment should appear at the time and place designated by the board of shareholders in Southwick Planning Board.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, go ahead, okay. Hang on.
Stormwater bylaw, for a stormwater regulation.
That's right, so as uh, was mentioned a few moments ago, we're still in gray area waiting for Attorney General review of the past bylaw. Having said that much, that revision pulls out technical standard within those bylaws elsewhere into regulation that we adopt at a public hearing. And so at the current moment, there's a exposure. And we want to make sure that all and everything does come together, and that's the things that we have, that we can go through to. I will spare you reading some of this uh, information here, but I want to touch upon a couple of key factors. Not the least of which, as was just a little moment ago as well, is the rainfall. So currently, uh, uh, I'll use the term antiquated, the reference document uh, that is stack that is used for stormwater calculation, standard for development uh, practice, and meshing some more standards for quite a long period of time. That all is changing, part of it, part of this discussion came from a realignment of the town's MS four permit for our municipal uh, stormwater system and the master EP stormwater standards. Basically, the MS four permit handed down by the EPA didn't line up well with our state regulations, so that discussion went along, which falls hand in hand with this and the bylaw change that was driven by the MS four permit. In a nutshell, P forty, that, to turn, uh, the current uh called projection document uh, will be replaced by the NOAA Atlas fourteen document. That is a document that is a living uh, reference and continues to be updated as we receive more rainfall data. It is uh, certainly more current in that aspect alone, having said that much, Southwick, Bramville, Westfield, I think maybe Agawam, we're in a funny pocket of the state where the projected rainfall amounts are out of alignment with what's been experienced. So it's wrote the misalignment between TP forty and this fourteen uh, information.
So we were previously projected to receive much less than we actually do.
That's correct. That's correct. Uh, in the order, well, before, before I get to some hard numbers here, um, basically, as we look at this fourteen, they give a range. And the adoption that's anticipated and is currently still going through some final view at the D E P level is to doubt something called Atlas fourteen plus. So looking at that confidence interval um, for rainfall projections and going for the ninety percent mark, um, of it within that range. They, they go through their, uh, analysis, have found that will satisfy stormwater quality, uh, needs. Simulation purposes. Bring this all back around. The fundamental change, uh, for a year, twenty-four hours. In our area, it's calculated at six and a half inches, um, is that, is that rainfall event? As I mentioned, we're in an interesting pocket. Changes fairly significant in that, uh, brings us to eleven, almost eleven and a half inches. For that specific effect. Uh, so fundamentally, there's, there's increase, a fairly substantial increase in volume, um, that would be required storage volume to attenuate those flows. It is a substantial change.
Is that the NOAA plus or is that just?
That is the NOAA plus. I do have a printout, uh, just fired up today. Essentially, one of the community things about the, uh, the NOAA Atlas fourteen is that you simply find yourself online, punch in a physical address and it spits out a few category data, uh, for your location. So if I just. Oh, yeah, lots of, lots of fun to do. But if I go to that twenty-four hour storm. Then you'll see in parentheses that, um, and so ninety percent of the twelve point seven projected inches rainfall within that range. That's that'll bring us about eleven and a half.
This promotes, this promotes accuracy. You don't have that.
NOAA plus is frequently updated. Is that the idea that it's going to be in? So living.
It is regularly updated. Do you know what the interval is?
I think it's full-time, honestly. It could be pretty storm event.
Like this past weekend, all that changed things.
So to keep in mind too, that this is being, we're setting up this system this way, like the three fifteen, where it is a regulation now as opposed to a bylaw. So that if there needs to be a change to the regulation, you know, it can be done with a little bit more quickness than having to go to town meeting and get to the proof, right? So we can do that. You know, you, you also, it's A, going to the data that is more.
We're getting better data and also creating a mechanism to better.
Correct. Right.
And, and so we don't have to have a public hearing on a stormwater permit application.
No, we still have to do, we still, we're still, we're still the regulating board. We're still doing the exact same thing.
Okay.
It's just
the details of.
The ability to actually change the right, to change the, you know, law that we're applying. We have the ability to change it to a public hearing process rather than a town meeting process. Because this is something that, you know.
Changes.
Changes.
Yeah.
And, and.
And we should be making ourselves more adaptable to such changes.
So.
Sure. We are trying to find some resiliency, um, for, I guess, we are now on climate change, right? Now, I talked about, about the projection because that's exciting stuff, uh, and it's, it's, it is a dramatic change. Other modifications to that technical document have to do with performance standards. So, uh, again, in alignment with what Mast EP is proposing, we are, uh, augmenting the performance for pollution removal, uh, from stormwater. Uh, as well, and I'm going to call just some reference, uh, changes. With that, I'll invite Mr. Spine. I miss anything in particular that you wanted to mention?
I, I just want to point out, there's something that every community is going to go through, or they're going through right now. So we're, they're going to recommunia messages, it's the same process. So a lot of the same thing that we're doing, we're taking all the technical documents out of the bylaw, putting it into this regulation that would, that can be technology changes and as well.
It's very important.
So where are we with the bylaw? That chapter, is it one eighty-three?
Coming close as to where, when, you know, the time runs out at the age he puts it, so.
Okay, so we have that also. We have the bylaw.
The bylaw is.
But it's pretty general.
Is pretty general and it uses, it basically. And so the document that got circulated with the red line changes took from the bylaw and put it into regulations and made adjustments to it. Um, and so a lot of it came from the bylaw and just was put into a regulation. You know, from that, from the bylaw standpoint, but we do have a bylaw that sort of gives that overview of the process, right, for the forces that, you know, public hearing and whatever else.
Has there been any comment, these comments by the development community, the developers? Are they aware of bylaw and these regulations?
Yeah, NAS DP has had an outreach for probably two plus years about this.
Because it's going to affect how they do their designs. Theoretically, increase the cost.
Any other questions, comments?
Really?
Yeah. Do I hear a motion? Is there anything else you? You're good? Ten minutes, you're good. All right. Uh, because we've had this now for, I mean, when did we?
It was.
We've had this for a year, right? I mean, no, I, well, we've had this document since early spring. Randy came with. We postponed the regulations, uh, when Randy came, just took for a time crunch. Correct.
And then we held off this expression until.
But you had already submitted this to us back, I want to say last fall, um, maybe even, uh, maybe it was.
It could have been there.
It's been a while, so.
There's a lot there, yeah. Like you, very detailed, like why you were moving something from here to there and everything.
All right. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Marcus Phelps, don't move.
Right here, second.
Richard, I'll sing a second.
Uh, do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Yeah, aye. All right, then we'll do a, um, motion, uh, to approve these regulations as proposed and circulated. Uh, do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps, don't move.
Richard, sing a second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard, sing a rye.
David Sutton, aye.
All right, perfect. Uh, eight thirty. Discussion of the master plan and housing plan process, which is why I think people are still hanging around. So, uh, and I appreciate it.
Just stay for all meetings.
So here's where we stand and board members offer your comments, but so. Um, to be fair, I have, I still have just not had the opportunity to go back and listen to the select board meeting from the other day, but I got plenty of comments emailed and phone calls about it. Um, so with the committee not having been formally approved and set up by the select board, we are going to go to the September thirteenth meeting and, um, you know, have a meeting and try to finalize the, the setup of that committee. Um, my inclination is not to discuss the specific individuals who may make up the committee because we've gotten, um, I guess when you come the donor and resident, oh, we've got twenty applications for. Spots. My inclination is not to have the discussion about individuals until that committee is approved by the select board. So, um, what I think we could tonight and just try to finalize before September thirteenth is, and, you know, it's getting late, so maybe not too much of a conversation about it, but um, have a discussion about the committees and try to finalize, you know, that sort of group of fifteen folks that we're going to have on the actual committee, uh, itself, um, and how we're going to use the boards and committees on that versus using boards and committees as consultants, I think, you know, for particular roles in the course of the two years, um, of the master planning process. You know, I think we talked about ones that sort of have to be on there, planning board, and I yeah, I, I, I propose at least two members, but I, um, I think we had talked about the two members being on it. Uh, a select board member, I think, has to be on it, DPW member, um, and Randy, I think, has indicated his willingness to serve on it. A, because of the nature of the master plan, I think Park and, Park and Parks and Rec Committee member has to be on it. Um, Lakes Management Committee member has, has to be on it. Um, and I think in agricultural slash conservation, as Bert has sort of, Bert Hanson, the Chair of the Ad Commission has sort of said, they're, they'll work together to figure out someone who can be on it. And I, there's one member who's actually on both, so maybe that's the number, um. That gets us and, and Finance Committee, I think, uh, and Economic, Economic Development Committee.
Yeah, we had Economic Development, Public School District.
All right, so hold on, I want to get to that. But so Economic and Finance Committee.
And Finance, that adds.
So that gets us to nine. I think we have. Without, without school, taking out school for a second. I have two planning board, one, one select member, DPW, Parks and Rec. That's five.
Five, six.
Agricultural Commission is one, Agricultural Conservation is one.
Seven.
Finance.
Eight.
Economic Development is nine.
Nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I'll make sure that I'm.
That's good.
And it's, and it's late, it's late. Um, that's nine. I think you have to have a town, uh, a, a business owner, um, would be ten. And uh, I think you should have four residents, which would be fourteen, and then I think you need school, and that's fifteen.
And, no, we already, I thought we had.
No. Put that aside for a minute. Uh, you know, I don't know, did we end up with school committee versus school department on there in what?
I think we had discussion on both. While the school committee certainly superintendent has the combination of both the school committee as well as operations and logistics. I think we're taking information about our school district and it's the technical operational information that will affect what we decide to do or what projection based decisions in the master plan on, not necessarily teacher hiring practices or how many, you know what I mean? Like school committee has its bubble and operations.
But as far as putting a member of that or not, I suppose, of that, of that department or committee on the actual master plan committee that is, that is.
They should hold a spot as, whether schools should withhold a permanent spot or if they should be a consultant.
No, well, so there's two decisions. One is, do you have someone from the schools generally as a actual spot on the committee or as a consultant, right? That's A. And then B, do you choose someone from, let's just assume it's a meeting member, not a consultant, because consultants, you could have multiple ones. Um, if it's a committee member, do you choose the school committee or do you choose the school department?
I think the first part is you have to do it. Part of, of the budget.
I think I agree with that, and I think that's I'm guessing most people are going to agree with that. Um, then you have to choose between school committee and school department, and who do you put on the?
Can they work it out amongst themselves? Okay. That's a no.
Were you smoking?
All right. You can, Dory.
So Dory, forty-four, we wrote, um, school committee is elected though, so the town ties them, their school administration is maybe not town board. There's that aspect, consider that at least we included in the school committee.
Plus, if you from town, if they're voted in town, their school committee, they'd be from town.
That's not true, because there's two members of the school committee who aren't from town. Um, not that I necessarily think that that's a way to, uh, a, a, a factor that takes them off of it, but. Um, all right, so let's put that.
Well, we definitely need public school interest represented. That's the thing. I, I try to think not so much the committee, but what stakeholders and interests can be represented, you know, who can represent those interests?
So let me, let me say this. So if we put a spot for the school and we can defer that discussion for a moment as far as department versus committee, um, this is what I have on the list of sort of consultants that we'd want to bring in for, you know, periods of time. Um, to the, to the, yeah. Police and fire. And I've already communicated with Russ, um, and, um, the chief landest and process down in Granby, uh, and, um, you know, has had a similar role where he was a consultant.
He'd be representing aspect of, of both police and fire?
There'd be police and fire, a separate one from each one, offering, uh, you know, input on that. Um, someone exposed whatever school, uh, committee or department doesn't get on the actual committee can be on as a consultant. Um, Water Commission, Historical Commission, Board of Health, Council on Aging.
Oh, you're going fast.
Sorry.
I'm at Water Commission.
Water. Historical.
Historical.
Board of Health. Aging. Cultural. And housing. I think those are tangential enough that you can use them in a consulting role rather than having them on a full committee for the master plan over a two-year period of time. But you know, I'm happy to hear, you know, first from board, but in, in public and offer opinions too, and on Zoom, since, let me actually not cover this thing up a night, so.
What was your rationale for Finance Committee being right on, uh, part of the master plan?
That's.
Are they, I guess they have knowledge of foster bonding and, and if people are proposing big projects.
They sort of want to make a little turn.
I, I think, well, so let's.
They're implement, they're implementors, I guess.
So let's start with A, which is I got an email from some other finance committee, asking me to be on it. So that's it.
Okay.
B is, um, I, I think what you just said, which is, at the end of the day, they're the ones doing the numbers and implementing. And so having that person with knowledge of that, that process, the thirty thousand foot view and sort of keeping people grounded a little bit on the other side, I think is useful to have on the committee.
They don't set the tax rate. Do they? They don't set the tax rate.
But I think they have knowledge of the process, and I think that's useful to the, to, to, like I said, I think the word I've used is ground the committee because I think that was an issue with the nineteen, whatever, ninety-seven plan was.
Ninety-seven, yeah.
Is, it, it, and, and a lot of it got implemented sort of independently, whether it got adopted by the planning board, but I think there were parts of it that sort of weren't grounded in how the town is going to actually fund and function. And so I think someone to sort of keep stuff grounded and that's can be multiple people, but certainly a finance committee member might be useful in that respect. Um, so that was my thinking on that. Um, they also, you know, I mean, economic development too, has a much smaller role in town historically, whether they should have a bigger role or not. You know, it's up for debate. I think having them on there is useful because of what this is. But, you know, really, in the finance committee has a better sense of how things are, are sort of being implemented and running down in the EDC, I think, in this town, at least right now, so. All right, any other discussion from the board on members? Or we can have a final discussion with the select board and just, but I just wanted to have at least a pretty decent.
So.
Product. Ready?
I'll just, just, I you mentioned the water. Is it work quality that for, or is it spread utilities such as fiber, gas? And those are.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. I mean, I think, you know, I, I, I we're talking about stakeholders. I mean, I think having that, and frankly, I, I think someone from a, you know, Mabex office or a developer in town is a useful voice in the conversation. I mean, I think they should have the ability to offer a voice in there and create a, a rounded product. Um, so, but I think utilities, I think is a good good suggestion to put on that sort of list of consultants and have that. good suggestion to put on that sort of list of consultants and have them in there. What was that? Comments about, let's start with live people about sort of the makeup of the, of the board, any comments on that? Okay, anybody on Zoom have any comments on that? Okay. So, the other things that I was kind of thinking of, and I just want to throw out there, one is there are what, ten spots designated for committees? They're supposed to be representatives of the committees, in my mind, you know, I, I'm wondering whether having some membership length minimum is useful to make sure that you're getting people who actually know what these committees and boards are doing and offering a useful voice to, to the process, I, I mean, I, I'm not saying that they don't have a useful voice otherwise, but if they're being on there as a member of, a representative of the board.
They should understand the historical issues that the board has faced.
Correct.
And would be able to offer up useful suggestions.
I'm wondering if having some you know, right, I mean, some requirement, and, and I suppose I rephrased as a mandatory or, or preference, but I mean, I, I'm wondering whether having that in place is useful because they're supposed to be representatives of a committee. If you just got on it, I mean, I just didn't, when I got on the planning board, I didn't know, you know, much of anything, so it took some time to sort of understand the bigger picture of things, and if you're going to be a representative of the commission or a board, you should have.
We sent letters to the commissions asking for them?
Not yet, but here's, I guess, let me, part two of this is, I also think that the boards and commissions should have their say as to who it is, it shouldn't be us in any way cherry picking who's coming from those ten.
We asked that of the such and such committee that you present a member of your committee who has experience tenure at least a year.
Overall, not necessarily tenure, but the, the knowledge base that we're looking for, right, or the.
Knowledge base that we're looking for includes the experience of being on said board.
I mean, that's, so, this is what I, this is my plan, and, and can be amended or trashed, but was we're the first board to have a, a meeting this month, there's, you know, September now, after Labor Day, people are going to start back to a normal schedule. So I was planning on sending out a email or a letter, I have John tomorrow, to the relevant boards and committees and say, you know, we'd like you to put on your agendas and take a vote and have a representative to offer to this master plan committee. And here, you know, to your requirement and blah, 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 but also if we're going to put some kind of tenure, you know, whatever that condition may be into it, have that into that letter or email, just so they can do it in a proper manner.
We request that when voting in this person, you keep in mind the potential for meetings, the two-year timeframe, and additionally, members of your committee who have experience on your board who could give the historical perspective, need to develop an appropriate and useful master plan.
So, and the question is whether you do that as a preference or a requirement?
I would say preference.
Say preference, but then let the board decide themselves.
And would you send this out before the select board, joint like board, planning board meeting? Because there are opinions as to.
Yeah, because, you know, well, but if they, if they vote and they have a representative and they're not on the committee, then it goes the other ways, right? I, I'm not going to, I'm going to phrase it as it hasn't been approved yet, like, in advance, because there are some, there are going to be some boards and committees that have.
Anticipate your committee having a spot.
Right, you know, at least have them start the process, and I can even, we're going to need consultants, and so it may be useful to have an individual from that border committee as a consultant, so, or at least a liaison, so.
Because as part of the planning process, usually the committee is not finalized until a consultant has been contracted with. But we don't, I mean, we don't have to follow other, what other towns do.
Well, so here's the other part.
You know, as we approach that, we don't want to get too far down the road in a head of who you're going to have as your consultant. Because they're going to look at where the interests are in the town, and to make sure that they're represented on the master plan committee, which just guides the process. I mean, the planning board is the one that adopts the plan.
You're talking about the actual consultant who prepares the master plan, I think Mike was talking about.
No, but I think he's saying that we should finalize the committee after we got the consultant involved, but I'm not.
I mean, I think.
If we're going to pay somebody, let's have something ready for them to work. And then what, wait a month for the boards to vote on their people?
No, no, we can be ready, but I think the final act of having the first meeting of the subcommittee because that has to be advertised and all that.
Oh, yes, we should have your consultants before you have your first meeting, but
Yes.
we should.
Okay.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
I, I think I agree with that, I just, but I think it should be the board that sort of decides who the important players are for this, and I also, I mean, the other part about it is this, in my, in my head, because I've seen this, I think, at least in South Palya, and maybe some other towns where you know, one of the things that I may recommend through the process is that a more formal master standing committee gets set up at the end of this, that has some, some degree of structure, some degree of flexibility, but can be used as an implementing committee in the downtime and can be reestablished as a, as a whole when the master plan needs to be updated. But, you know, we talk a lot about proactivity with the planning board not having enough time to do it, well, if you have a master plan implemented committee, they can do some of the legwork to sort of keep things moving and looking at other towns bylaws and sort of creating a bylaw or doing this or doing that, and they can supplement.
That's a good idea, because a lot of plans are finished. Implementation.
Correct.
Lags.
So.
You know, because you need money and you need town meeting votes and that sort of thing, so.
But I think we can sort of create this, what we think is should be on this committee, we can start this process, but if we're going through this two-year process and with a consultant involved, and we think that the committee membership should be tweaked a little bit, and we're going to set up the standing committee going forward, we can make those tweaks sort of going forward, you know, use someone as a consultant, and then tweak it going forward as far as a member of the committee, if necessary, but. Right, any other?
I had a couple of things.
Yep.
Process to select. Use, we can go with a request which drafted one of those and pages of, you know, what the scope of the work is and various ratings and so forth. One approach, the other approach is to use the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, because they're a quasi government agency, we can contract directly with them. Without putting out an RFP, but you have, we provide them with a scope of work and, and sign an agreement, you know, for them to facilitate the process. Lanford, East Long Meadow have used Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Lanford has a hundred thousand dollars to do their I don't know what East Long Meadow had, had, but we have twenty-five thousand, so I don't know spending the time and effort to put out an RFP and get bids of a large number, I don't know, but anyway, that's something to think about. The other thing is, I've contacted the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Catherine Retey, who was the head of the planning section over there, and asked that they come and do a presentation at our October fifth meeting, and I don't know, I haven't heard back. I did say, you know, we're, we're operating remotely, so they could do a Zoom presentation. But they have a lot of background in doing plans, and it would just be an overview for everyone as to what's, you know, what's in the plan and how it goes and so forth and so on. And, you know, maybe we'll have Q and As, you could bounce off this idea of established implementation group or whatever, and, and we could go down the list of who we've got. You know, the interest at this point that we've got represented on the subcommittee, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping we can do that at the twenty-first meeting, you know, and have it established at the thirteenth, and I could give y'all the twenty things here and, and circulate them, and you guys can look it up.
So anyway, that, that's just two things, I mean, at some point, we need to pull the trigger on getting a consultant. If we do an RFP, we'll probably be into December. We finally make a decision on a consultant.
Can I ask, is there correct me, or it doesn't seem to be much benefit, where is the benefit of putting out an RFP versus going with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission at this point?
Well, I mean, I think.
If we had a lot of money.
So we don't have enough money for it, it's going to take longer, we're banking on our, our ability to clear these consultants and whether they're a right fit for us, whereas we could kind of go to the, the staffing company already, that's already has consultants that they know that might work for us. They could point us in the direction of the person who's not going to require a hundred thousand.
No, I, and I, I mean, I guess the sort of pros and cons, right, are, I mean, they, they, like anybody else, are going to have a, you know, a, a probably a bent to them, right, I mean, they're not they're going to be what they do, and, and.
And you don't know how much they have on their table, or on their, they're working, mainly, I think, right on Lanford. Long Meadow was pretty well finished, these were short-term resilience plan, can they call them, that the state was funding.
And if we run out of money. And we run out of money. Will our end result be a little bit neater if we have the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission with us, or is you're not paying us anymore, Townes Southwood, this independent consultant drops us, and we're left with.
Right. Well, the other, the other component we have going to is the housing plan. Which we probably should do in our, through an RFP, because it was suggested it'd be kind of a standalone document. And that's twenty-five, up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Alright.
So you mean the ten pages?
It's so pretty.
We can talk more about it on the thirteenth or at the next meeting, and I, I got to reach out to other towns. Specifically, I know I, Wes Fielder, I want to talk to about, they're doing the master right now too. They're where we are right now, so I want to talk to them about where they're heading, and maybe they have some input that is useful to us. They're in a different boat, I mean, they're updating it.
Yeah, but they, yeah, there's, of course, it's a city, so it's a lot more.
Well, no, I mean, there's a lot of different, I mean, but I'm just curious what they are doing, and so, I possess that, that, the next move. Anybody else have any? Diane?
This board, or is the select board not going to say enough?
That's why I'm, I don't want to, it's going to be the, I think the planning board.
Not the committee role.
I, I think the planning board selects the residents and the, and the business owner, I think that that's any board is, the, the board that is adopted master plan, the one who's sort of running the process, I think they should be the ones choosing who the resident and business owner is on the committee, so I, that's why I want to keep the sort of names and individuals, you know, out of discussion right now, until we've actually got the committee approved by the select board. Got a media, and then we have the discussion about the plan board. Give me the ninety-seven. My under, you know, I've got to spend more time with it, and I think you have, like, you've got, I always put online, right? Mine's, my memory and understanding was that, weren't they trying to move the town center in some way in that ninety-seven master plan? Well, I I thought they were trying to move the town in a way that just wasn't all that feasible, and that was a, and that was a sticking point of that master plan, there were things like the mixed use, I think, in there, there's a recommendation that got implemented, there were and it's, it's late in my brain, it's not working, so, but there are a bunch of things in there, and actually, I think in the version that I posted online, there's checkmarks as to what got implemented and what didn't. So, you know, there's a number of things in there that got implemented.
I ask, there's a lot of other documents that were created along the way, that claimed they were part of this process.
And I don't, see, I don't know, because I wasn't there, so I mean.
Terry Mish, Terry Mish was very involved in the whole process. I was looking, when I was looking through the minutes for the disc golf course, I kept, I came across things for some reason, I think. Anyway, I, I was seeing things, you know, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission came, Chris Curtis gave a presentation, gave an update. Terry Mish gave an update, and then it just kind of ended. There wasn't like a vote, I don't know, maybe they expected a town meeting vote, or, or they expected a planning board vote, and there was, wasn't you know, the will do it, so I don't know.
This board likes the product and recommendations in a master plan, does this board adopt it, or does?
It's the planning board who adopts it, now, I just want to just put stuff in perspective, right, so the master plan is going to have recommendations in it, as you saw in, in that master plan and in the, in the old one, correctly. Those can get implemented by the, by the various boards that need to implement it, probably the planning board in most cases. But the master plan as a document, whatever else, the language in there, has some implication in the bylaws right now, like they're, they're, they're mentioned, the master plan is mentioned throughout the bylaws as a document you can refer to to sort of make decisions, right, and so that has some legal, legal ramification to it, and so that, I think, needs to be thought about, and that's why I want to have a pretty broad group that is, you know, grounding people, so that we can try to get one that is adopted and useful for the planning board to refer to when they're making decisions on bylaws, right, and, I mean, the other part about it too is you can change the bylaws to, to add in or recommend changing the bylaws to add in where you want the master plan considered, right, it doesn't have to be static as it is right now, you could put in or take out, you know, when you consider the master plan and decisions, so, I mean, I but that's why, that's where the adoption comes into play, right, it's adopted and becomes something that planning board can rely on in making decisions, that's why it's useful, that's really the only reason why the, the adoption is useful. The recommendations are what they are, and you can just, you know, do this, the outside act to implement those things. Yep.
If you're, you're talking about putting in the one with the most tenure may not and if you're going to use the same old, same old, if that thing you're going to get the same old, same old.
Right, but there's got to be a balance, right, I mean, you don't, someone who just I, I appreciate new people being involved with committees and getting on boards, but at the same time, making a master plan about the town, someone who just got on a board and is on there as a representative of that board in May, you know, is not necessarily going to be someone who can provide the context, and I, so I, I, I agree with you, I just want to find that happy medium of and maybe just. And I, so I, I, I agree with you. I just want to find that happy medium of, and maybe just as a preference or a request. And it's consideration of the boards to have someone who has some degree of, you know, experience. I mean, I, you know, Dave's been out here now for three years, right? I mean, I, you know, so he has, I think, enough experience. I, I'm not sure in your first year, you would have the experience there, right? I mean, and so I, I just, I think that that's, has some importance. I just don't, I didn't know quite where to put it.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dory, go ahead.
So have we looked at the U.S. Economic Development Administration grants that have an application by next month?
That's, you're the grant guy.
Well, this is an opportunity to apply for Department of Housing and Community Development because folks didn't seem inclined to do that.
Well, no, I'm not sure where it flies.
I, I'm not aware of that one. Who is it? Department of Housing?
Dory, if you want.
The Economic Development Administration through the U.S. Department of Commerce is doing American research. Right.
Do me a favor, Dory, if you could, and just send that either to me or to the, um, planning board public hearings email. And we'll take a look at it and see if it applies. The one you mentioned before, Marcus, I think, forget if you were, there's Alan there. We had a discussion about it and we didn't think it actually could be used for this process. So.
Well, this is 200 to 600,000.
Yeah, well, that's good. So, but let's take a look at it and see where it stands and whether we can. We'll take a look and see, you know, Marcus has done a bunch of work finding stuff. He found that, he found, I mean, you got the CPC stuff done. You, you found that other one that didn't end up to be applicable, but I.
DHC, Department of Housing.
Right. So, I mean, I, so.
And Pioneer Valley Plan Commission, they, they have a good network. They are in tune with what's coming down from the state in particular. So.
So the sort of.
They're another ally.
Right, the structure is use the money, 25,000, get this ball rolling, 25,000 for housing. And, um, you know, get a sense from them as to what also costs, try to use that timeframe to get grants and whatever else that we can sort of offset that cost for the town. Have another funding round for the, for the next year. You know, assess over the next, whatever it is. Any other questions, comments? Anybody on Zoom have a question or comment before we finish up the meeting here or finish up this process? Thank you, Dory. Um, okay, so let's, we'll, um, plan, assuming that the committee gets set up on the 13th to talk about.
You want us to zoom in or pan, right?
Choices. So, I'll be there. Um, so I know Sutton is gonna be there. So we'll hopefully have that set up. And then on the 21st, we can start discussing all the applications that came in and hopefully get a decision on that. All right.
Will you have those hard copy available or if they're in the office?
I'm gonna email them to everybody after the 13th.
Oh, you're gonna email them.
But I'll also get you a hard copy. Do whatever you want.
Hard copy is good for me.
Okay.
I'm old time.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Save your printer.
Let's get some of these minutes out here before.
Minutes? I've printed them multiple times.
It's killing me.
Some of these were transcripts.
I just wanna, well, I.
I'm sorry.
We, we've had them. We've offered suggestions on them and then we've gotten to the end of the meeting, like, and we've kept just kicking.
Cause it's been late. So, but even though it's late now.
It is late now. I just.
I just want to get it done because I, I, I don't want to answer.
Do we know?
Fair enough.
Maybe John can help us. To be fair, I'm sorry, I have a date on there as domestic placeholders, July 20th and August, have not yet been distributed.
Oh.
13th, we've made changes.
Right again.
Well. They transcripts, they're pretty much verbatim from the recording.
29th.
Yeah. 29th was?
That was the 100th page.
Yeah, so, I mean.
So.
I listened and checked.
All right.
So, I did it.
So you sent around, on June 29th, you sent around your suggestions on August 10th. I think that's why we held off on the last one, Jessica, as you sent out the edits on the, um, I did, on the, I think, the day of the meeting. Um, and it just hadn't been incorporated yet. So we wanted to hold off on that. So, um, I assume everybody's had a chance to look at those edits. And so the June 29th minutes, do I hear a motion to approve those with the edits made by Jessica as of August 10th?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay. And that's the big one that we sort of did with an eye toward, you know, any litigation on the carbon issue.
Oh, that was.
Um, so those are large. So enjoy reading that if you want, because it's basically a transcript of those, uh, that here. Um, so July 13th, um, let me see if I can find the center around by Mr. Goddard on August 5th. And was. And did.
You weren't here? You were here?
I have no idea. That's Jessica sent around on August 9th, um, a copy of her edits. So I, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from July 13th that were distributed, Mr. Goddard? Uh, on August 5th with the edit. On August 9th.
Marcus Phelps, don't move. Second.
James, be in a second. Uh, all those approve say, or all those in favor say aye.
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 Standing. All right, so those two are done and then we will take up the next, we're halfway there and we'll take up the next two at the next meeting.
So the 20th and the 10th aren't gonna be transcripts. They'll be the normal kind of.
And the 20th was a pretty, yeah, you know. Um, so.
Cool.
What did we end up doing with the wireless district? Did it get advertised or not?
It has not.
Okay.
Whoa, we're doing something?
We'll take it up and consider any revisions that need to be made to the wireless communication.
For the court case is settled?
Well, I.
Nothing's happened on it since.
Nothing has happened on it.
So we'll just keep the hearing open?
No, no, well, no, I think, I think it's, um, um, you know. So let's put it this way. So they're either gonna litigate it and we can do whatever we want with the bylaw in the meantime, or they're gonna try to settle it. And any condition on settlement is going to, uh, it's gonna have a tower somewhere. And so it's probably worth making any revisions we want now. So let it say, you know, I mean, what came up over there was, um, the board, right? So if they want to put on the board's property, it needs to be in a district. So not to say that you do that for any litigation purposes. But I mean, I think when we went through the process, and I confused myself eventually, but you guys thought that there was a need to be changes.
Yeah, it's interesting, uh, looking at the record, February 27th of 01, there was quite a bit of discussion during the public hearing on the Wireless Communications Service District. And the first go around, which was back in October of 1998, there was, that's when it was established and it was no discussion. And it was just, this is it. This is what it's gonna be. And it's because it was in the industrial zones. That's all they did. And the second go around, when they revised it in 01, there was quite a bit of discussion, but basically they added property that was owned by the town. So they added down by the transfer station.
Yep.
They added the property election con circle and some out to the west near Sodom Mountain, which the town owns land out there.
Those clouds are shock. Ready? You ready? Oh, you should have had that.
Okay.
So we're gonna open, we'll open a hearing on this, I guess. And there's really no, how can I say, scientific basis for how these locations, the overlay zone was decided. It was the zoning.
But I think you have, you know, you have the data presented in that hearing. So you can use that. You can use a consultant if you wish to have more data and you have a sense of how these things work now to figure out where the best places.
High altitude.
To do it. So I think there's a more, I think there's a more educated way to do it at this point in time. And you may want to change provisions in the actual bylaws, it sounded like. So I, I just think putting it on for a public hearing to let people have a discussion is probably worthwhile. Um, so maybe we'll try to put that on for October.
And I don't know if you want to, uh.
You know, just put it as potential amendments to.
Look at these minutes.
The district in the, in the map. All right. Mr. Sutton, you want to unmute yourself?
Hold on one second.
Yes.
So desire, I assume you're looking. Uh, we pushed off the decision for 115.
Son of a.
And as much as that'll be, like, to duck that, I need a moment.
He needs a moment.
Yeah.
Shall we?
All right.
I can bake the bite, Mike.
Yeah, all right. Hold your horses, Dave. Make those pancakes.
It's not 11 o'clock yet.
Yeah.
But it is 11 o'clock somewhere.
He just needs to print out the decision.
It's 11:25 somewhere.
All right. Uh, Mr. Mowgli has a question. And then.
Oh.
What's he doing up this late?
I don't know.
Who is it?
No, Mr. Mowgli.
Yankees game over.
Oh, hey, Doug.
The Yankee game's over.
Uh, I bet they won.
No, they did not. I don't think. I was busy doing something else and listening to your meeting. I think they're doing about as well as the Red Sox from what I heard tonight. Um, no, I, I appreciate the commentary on the wireless and I think that's a great strategy to follow. Um, my only question is, does that, any resultant action from the public hearing would be something that would go to town meeting as a zoning bylaw revision, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So.
Time gap or, or I suppose you guys had had an earlier town meeting or a second town meeting, um, if you go to that. But it doesn't look like that's in the works because there's nothing needs to be dealt with.
Right. So that town, that meeting would have to stay open for a long time. Because I think it has to be 90 days before a town meeting or 60 days before a town meeting, within 60 days or 90 days of the town meeting. But I think it's an excellent idea and, you know, you and I have talked about it before. I think it's a great idea. I just, formality wise, I think that it should be, you should send a, you should send a request to the selectmen for a proposed wireless bylaw change for an article at town meeting. So it just gets sent back and coincides with your hearing. So you don't have to do it twice, just in case, right?
Say that again?
Just procedurally, normally a zoning change, zoning bylaw change gets to be added to the warrant, goes to the selectman, who then immediately as a formality, send it back to the planning board to hold a hearing. If that's what you want to do, let's just do that now. And just go through that process now. We could even probably get it on the agenda for next week and get it sent right back. So that when you advertise, it would, it would be a proposed warrant article to amend the map. If that's the only thing that comes out of this, out of it, or a zoning bylaw change for the wireless communication overlay district. But just so that you have your proverbial ducks in a row, when you get to town meeting, that that's the process that would have to follow anyway. So just, we just send, just send a request as the chair to the, to the board of selectmen. Selectmen will immediately send it right back to the planning board to hold the hearing, which you're talking about holding. And it just, it, it's the formality that we always go through for a zoning bylaw change, which is the result is an article on a town meeting warrant.
And we won't close.
It just reserves everything.
We won't close the hearing.
Right. You just keep it open ad nauseam, right? Until you get closer to the town meeting, then you'd close it. But I think your strategy is brilliant as far as making it. Obviously, you heard a lot of feedback back during the Verizon application that that parcel's not a great location for a potential tower, right? So there's alternatives. And if there is an alternative resolution, eventually from the litigation that comes out of it, that could be settled. Then perhaps having an alternative site that you vetted and had a public hearing on and now gets codified at town meeting to be part of the wireless communication overlay district, makes a settlement that works for everyone and avoids protracted litigation to no one's benefit, maybe is beneficial for the town. And, and, and also just to follow up, Marcus is correct. There was that modification to the bylaw that added some property. I, I slightly disagree that there wasn't some discussion around whether they were good places or bad places. For example, one of the towers did end up on town property, right? In a good spot as far as, as good as it could be at the transfer station, relatively good location for height, good location for coverage. In an area that was well underserved in that, the south, southern end of town. So it was a decent bylaw modification that came through. But here, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit of opinion and subjective, but that's, you know, my take on it. And then, you know, you got your feedback at the public hearing on the other one, that, okay, that perhaps that, that location on, uh, off Lexington or off Liberty is not suitable any longer because of development that's occurred there since that came in. Okay. Where else can we put it that might serve those residents in a better way?
Okay. Um, I'll send that request over. I think that's a good idea. And, you know, I mean, my goal, we're gonna have to keep it open for a while, but I don't want to get in the situation where we were last time. Before we were holding a hearing the day before, we had to get warrant articles in for one of, four of them, something.
I think you're actually, you've got it. You're, you're way out in front. And, and if, you know, if we end up with a special or something like that, it might play into your hands. I don't know. We're not talking about one right now. But even if you have to, this way, you're not gonna be, you're almost automatically not putting yourself in that boat because you've got the hearing, what? Eight months before the town meeting? So.
Planning, we're the planning board.
You're the planning board.
Yeah, sure. Um, all right. Thank you.
No, thank you. Can we chew up the time? Is Goddard back yet?
We've got a draft in front of us. We've got a draft.
I do the best that I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Go Red Sox. All right. All right. Um, so this is 115 Fred Jackson wrote the.
Shall I share?
Fred. Yeah, share it for Sutton. Um.
The state law.
Okay, so I would just put, it's not a site plan review, right?
No. Estate law. Permanent common driveway.
It has to be site plan approval, right?
CCN.
Or is it not with the common driveway?
You mean the sections?
Is it the state line?
9, 10, 21, 30.1.
No, but I'm wondering, under 21 and 30.1, do you have to do a, um? I think you have to do a site plan approval.
With the special permits.
So it's 9, 10, and actually it has to be, um, 11, right? Because it's our 40.
Excuse me.
Oh, it's.
Not, not 11, uh. Sorry. Hold on, I just want to, yeah, we can come back to that, that, let me just look at it. But let's keep going through. Only thing I'd say right now is just, I would put, all right, let me let you get it up there for a sec.
12 is 30.
You guys want to quickly just run through it and see if there's anything else?
Gotta take dick out of there.
Thank you. Richard, that's.
I would save it after.
Uh? I would just.
No, 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 it says.
Red line now.
Well, you have to say separately, you abstain, you refused yourself.
Don't we usually with your non-putting member on something, don't you take yourself off? Just take your name out of there.
So. I would. That's how I drive a special permit up. You don't need to put that somebody's time, we just put that up top there.
Are we gonna comment that Richard abstained?
Take out dead from that list there, and put at the end after the period. You know, Richard Utzinger.
As in a butter, he's a butter.
You never know.
So.
Oh, and Jessica is an associate member.
Correct, that's right. No?
Oh, I may have already fixed it. She's on one, one instance, few word searches they have to run through.
Oh, you did a word search on a.
I'm gonna have to.
On alternate.
All right, so. All right, is that, so Sutton, you can see that?
Yeah.
Nine, ten, and twelve, right? Let me just see.
I'm sorry.
Keep it still, John.
One, side plan, so special permission, site plan approval, so nine, ten, twelve, twenty one, and thirty point one.
Under the first paragraph under decision, or the only paragraph. You have, it's listed, it is therefore decided to grant special permit, site plan approval to the also. And estate law and.
Yeah, so that same thing just has to be. Grant a. Special permit and site plan approval for. And a state law and.
And decision kind of ends up being in a weird place. You'll.
You can.
I would print it out. Something in line edits.
For the copy we'll actually sign.
Absolutely.
We gotta put in site plan. All right. All right, everybody go to page one. The procedural history.
Yeah.
All right, so why don't you, John, if you want to scan over to, so that Sutton can see it.
Wow, the estate law contains fifty four point seven four acres. It has to, doesn't it?
No.
It only needs five acres.
It's fifty foot, fifty feet of frontage, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. It's a state line, so it means fifty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they just did it as, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, and these are, I'm assuming, almost probably the same as Sodom Mountain. My memory serves me because. Same idea, it's a residential.
And this one had quite a bit of state input, didn't they have to review for some kind of a. Species, and then they asked for some kind of a replication. Whatever.
Okay, so.
On page three there, Mike?
Yeah, if you want to keep going down. Like I said, it's almost the same as Sodom Mountain, with the same idea. It's not exactly the same, but it's the same idea. Okay. Yep. So it's the apartments where. And then the conservation order conditions.
Be accurate, Marcus. Conservation's decision under that file number. Their decision encompasses the efforts made with endangered species program and with that fall on water quality.
That was a fill.
Excellent.
All right, conditions.
Number eleven on page five. At the common driveway. By law.
Common driveway into that list. And, I mean, four is the important one that has the conditions. Anything else? Oh, we didn't change the opposite.
No. Page six.
Take off Mr. Utzinger. There's two votes here? Oh, yeah, common driveway.
Dave, are you all set, Sutton?
Yeah, but.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Other than the changes we made.
All right, so this has been closed, right?
Yeah.
So do I hear a motion to grant? Special permanent site plan approval for. State law and common driveway for one fifteen Fred Jackson, actually. Special permanent site plan approval for the state.
I'll move Marcus.
As noted with the terms and conditions in this written decision. All right, second, please be a second. We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Dory, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Hey Sutton.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thor and aye.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the special permanent site plan approval for the common driveway as noted with the terms and conditions in the written decision?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Please be in a second. Roll call vote, Michael Dory, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Please be in a aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thor and aye.
All right, so then do I hear a motion to approve the written decision for the. Special permanent site plan approval for an estate lot and common driveway for one fifteen Fred Jackson.
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Do I hear a second? Your roll call vote, Michael Dory, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
You can aye.
Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thor and aye.
All right. I think we're all set. Mr. Sutton. You have a motion you wish to make?
Yeah, I want to, I make a motion.
You can't. We can't hear you.
You're breaking up.
All right, all right, I make a motion to close the meeting.
Do I hear a second? Dave, be in a second. I believe your original one was a motion for pancakes, but yes. All right.
Nobody seconded it, you know?
All those in favor of closing the meeting, say aye. And. Closing, okay, done. Thank you.
Outstanding.